Thank you for being here tonight as the holiday season begins and we're all able to enjoy our friends and our families. Last week, Christmas on La Solis was a really great event and helped kick off the season here in our city. So to kick off tonight's meeting, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to invite Robert Gadsden Jr. from Dillard Elementary School to please come up to the dais. Come on up, Robert, and help lead us off in the pledge. If I can ask you all to please stand.
Our prayers to the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have something for you. We have something for you. We have the City for our holiday meal. We have this for you. Thank you so much for what you did for Wednesday.
Thank you.
Smile. Smile.
Can we get a group picture with the Commissioner?
Okay, please be seated, everybody. We're going to take a couple of things out of turn right now. We'd like to recess the evening meeting so we can jump into the Community Redevelopment Agency Board meeting. Just a couple of items. We normally do this in the afternoon, but since we didn't have a conference meeting, we don't want to keep those who have been waiting any more than we have to. So, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Not present.
Chair Trentals?
Here. M1, motion approving minutes for the November 21st, 2023 Community Redevelopment Agency Board meeting. Any questions? If none, would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Good move.
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Not present.
Chair Trentals?
And that motion is now approved. M2, motion reappropriating debt service payment to fiscal year 2024 incentive accounts.
Mayor, I didn't get your vote.
I'm sorry?
I didn't get your vote.
Your vote? Oh, I said yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry. M2, motion reappropriating debt service payment to fiscal year 2024 incentive accounts. Do I hear motion to approve?
Introduce.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
I think it's just a resolution.
It says motion.
I don't have that on mine.
M2?
Right. Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. I just want to make sure you knew what you were seconding.
I am. I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Not present.
Chair Trentals?
Yes, and M2 is now approved. R1, this is a resolution approving an amended letter of intent with 909 Northwest Sixth Street LLC and change in the CRA source of funds for the 909 Cistron Project, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, amending resolution number 21-20 and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Chair Trentals?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business of the CRA? There being none, that meeting is now concluded. So thank you for your patience, everybody. We appreciate it. And now let's move back into our evening meeting. Let's begin with a moment of silence. It's holiday season and let's take a moment to share with one another. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Not present.
Chair Trentals?
Here. We have a couple of agenda announcements. R4 is to be taken up after OSR1. It's just the logical sequence of that. And OSR1 is going to be a public hearing, so we will be taking public comments and testimony. If you want to speak on that item, please sign up with the clerk. Changes to the agenda. CP4 in the CAM was revised to add Croissant Park to the soccer officiating services. And CP8, a background section of the CAM was revised. And R3, Exhibit 3, the resolution has been revised to increase the term of the sublease from 30 years to 50 years. Anyone have any questions? I also want to mention that the -- thank you. That the City Attorney's Office is asking that CM7 be deferred. This is the issue with regard to food, not bombs, and the attorney's fees. CP4 in the CAM was revised to add Croissant Park to the soccer officiating services. And CP8, a background section of the CAM was revised. And R3, Exhibit 3, the resolution has been revised to increase the term of the sublease from 30 years to 50 years. Anyone have any questions? I also want to mention that the, thank you, that the City Attorney's Office is asking that CM7 be deferred. This is the issue with regard to food, not bombs, and the attorney's fees that are being claimed for that lawsuit that we lost. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but that was a situation in which the city of Fort Lauderdale attempted to remove food, not bombs, from city public areas. And those folks were feeding homeless people. We lost that case, went all the way up to the federal appellate court, back and forth. We lost, and now I believe the original claim for attorney's fees was 1.2 million or something like that. And it is now at 638,196. It's a shame we have to pay that to attorneys, even though I'm fully behind attorneys. It'd be much better if we could have given that to the homeless people themselves. Nonetheless, that'll be taken off the agenda tonight.
And Mayor, can we find out exactly why, or are we able to know why we're deferring that?
City Attorney?
Yes, we got to notice at the last minute that of the payees on the check for the payment, only one wants to be paid. The others are deferring to that entity to be paid, but I want something in writing that they've all deferred and so we don't get tagged by somebody else saying, "I want to be paid too." So I'm told they're all okay with this.
So we need a dispersment order showing that the correct parties are being paid.
Understood.
We'll get verification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aside from that, should I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved to second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda as amended have now been approved. So now, we have our portion of our meeting where we have presentations. Presentations are an opportunity for the City Commission and the community at large to recognize individuals, organizations, or events that this community finds important. And our number one presentation tonight is regarding declaring December 5th today as Rick Case Bikes for Kids Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and I wonder if Rita Case could please join me at the podium.
You're right.
Yes. So, today we have the opportunity from the office of the mayor of the city of Fort Lauderdale to present this proclamation in recognition of the 41st annual, 41 years while, Rick Case Bikes for Kids Program this December 5th, 2023. Whereas the Rick Case Bikes for Kids Program was initiated in 1982 by Rita and Rick Case, God bless his soul, and the Rick Case Automotive Group in Ohio. The Rick Case Bikes for Kids Program works in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, local charities, churches, and schools to collect donated bicycles and share them with deserving children in time for the holidays. Hundreds of bicycles, thousands of bicycles, were distributed to children last year, and over 125,000 bikes have been provided since the inception in 1982. The Rick Case Bikes for Kids Program is collecting bikes for the 2023 holidays, so you still have time to participate in this program through December 20th, 2023. You want to give out your cell number?
Yeah, oh, you can get that at the dealership.
Okay. We have a goal this year of 6,500 bikes, so think about it. In celebration of the program's 41st anniversary, we encourage Fort Lauderdale residents to donate unused bicycles and invite their friends and family to join in, helping to fulfill children's holiday wishes.
It says unused?
Unused.
Oh, no. Unused would be new, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no, they're not, no, we're not looking.
It could be used or unused.
No, we're looking for used bikes, like the bikes that you no longer are using. That's the idea of that.
Okay, but if you have unused ones, we're not going to refuse them.
Yeah, we are. We don't want people that think they have to bring new ones.
Right, right. Thank you for helping me on that. So finally, the delighted recipients, so she's listening to what I'm saying. The delighted recipients are the children whose holidays are brightened by the generous benevolence of the community and everyone engaged in the Rick Case Bikes for Kids Program. Now therefore, we as City Commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim December 5th, 2023 as Rick Case Bikes for Kids Day here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and ask Fort Lauderdale residents to join us in commending the Case family as well as those who make this outstanding program possible for their dedication to bringing happiness to so many children during the holiday season. San by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis. Congratulations, Rita, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You want to say a few words?
Yes, I do, let's get a picture.
Okay.
So yeah, it was 41 years ago, Rick and I decided, there's so many bicycles that people no longer need in their garage and they don't know what to do with them. So we said, hey, if you come to the dealership with those, we'll make sure that we match them up with a Boys and Girls Club kid, or we do for Women in Distress, we donate them all to the Habitat for Humanity, all kinds of churches and organizations after 41 years are in line for our bicycles. So the whole idea was to get the community to bring in bikes they no longer need. Sometimes people will get a new bike, but most of the time it's, you know, good-conditioned bikes that you no longer need. So we asked the community to bring them in, and we, our goal, like the mayor said, was 6,500 bikes, which we get them every single day. So drop them off at any Rick Case dealerships, we have nine locations, you can go on rickcase.com and find them. We're open seven days a week, just pull up with your car, and there's people available in the service department, the showroom, everybody knows how to take in your bike, and we'll be happy to unload it for you, and from there you can be assured that some child that hadn't had an opportunity to have a bicycle, most of them, the first bicycle they've ever had, will be from your garage that you no longer need. So it's a win-win. I hope everyone will join us this year and make it a very successful year. Thank you very much, Mayor, and the city of Fort Lauderdale for the recognition.
Thank you so much. Our next presentation is from Visit Lauderdale Sports and Entertainment Vice President Glenn Allen to talk about the 2023 Sports Travel Award. I'd like to invite Stacy Ritter, who's president and CEO of Visit Lauderdale, and Glenn Allen, Sports and Entertainment Vice President of Visit Lauderdale, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. On behalf of Visit Lauderdale, myself, Glenn Allen, Stacy Ritter, we are honored and excited to be here to celebrate a special accomplishment. First, let me just say, to recruit and host an event, it all starts with a venue. That is the most important aspect to hosting any event. And for sports tourism organizations to be successful, it's imperative to have intrinsic relationships with the local communities and stakeholders, not only to get access to these venues, but also to continually develop new opportunities. Here in Fort Lauderdale, we were very lucky, the city had the vision and perseverance to renovate the Fort Lauderdale Aquatic Center. We were already known as a first-rate destination for aquatic sports, but now we are known as the premier destination for aquatic sports, and it's because of this world-renowned venue we now have. Two months ago, we attended the Teams Conference, which took place just north of us in West Palm Beach, Florida. This is the largest sports tourism conference we attend every year, with over 400 event owners and over 600 sports tourism representatives that attend this conference. The Sports Travel Awards Show is annually hosted alongside this conference, and at this show, they award six different events every year. Those events go to best amateur event, best collegiate event, best professional event, best new event, best new or renovated venue, and best host city. We nominated the Fort Lauderdale Aquatic Center for best new or renovated venue, and drum roll, please. We won! Yay!
Is that like in the whole wide, is that like in the whole wide world or just in the U.S.?
In the U.S.
Okay.
But, we probably would win the world.
We'll take it.
Yes. No, and this is the first aquatics venue to win this award. There have been, you know, many NFL stadiums, various venues in the past have won, and so it's pretty exciting that we're the first aquatics venue to win this. And on behalf of, behalf of Visit Lauderdale, Stacy, we want to present you all with this award.
Nice.
To the City Commission for everything you all have done to help us make this a world-renowned aquatics destination.
Carl, where are you? This is Carl, who's Parks and Rec Director. Wow, very nice. Thank you. Here you go, Carl.
Definitely, we just want to quickly thank Laura and her team at the aquatics facility. Without them, you know, we have a great partnership. We recruit events together, we support events together, and that's what, you know, helps drive tourism here. So we definitely, we're super appreciative of Laura and all her help. And I have also something I wanted to just share with you all, I'll leave one with everybody. We, this was from the Sports Business Journal, we actually have been promoting the new aquatics facility, and so it was exciting to be the front cover of that, when was that, a couple months ago issue? But now I'll turn it over to our CEO, Stacy Ritter, with another award.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's always nice, first of all, to be on this side of the dais, and to be able to give you good news. So I'm here to present to you the Trazzy Traveler Award. Trazzy Traveler is Global Traveler's sister publication, and it's the dedicated resource for travelers who are 25 to 40, so my demographic, and an avid reader of it. And what are you laughing at? You think that's funny? Okay.
You're also drinking.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the readers select the winners of these awards. It is read by tens of thousands of people in that amazing age demographic, which we all love very much, because if we capture them at 25, we capture them at 35 and 45 and so on. And the readers who provide tips and reviews of places that they've gone to, the readers have chosen their favorite beach town on the east coast of Florida as Fort Lauderdale. So you are the Trazzy, 2023 Trazzy Award winner for best beach. The Trazzy readers, the Trazzy readers, so it is a, voted on by their readership, the people who actually travel and provide tips and reviews, but it's a consumer award.
It's consecutive, second consecutive year?
Yeah, I kept last year's for the office.
Carl, come on up here, this is your baby.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lady down. Is there more?
Oh, I'm going to leave you all with one of these.
Thank you.
you so much for your leadership and all the folks in our, on our staff who work for us day in and day out in making Fort Lauderdale the great place that it is, especially in recreation facilities that we have in our city. Our next presentation is the Parks and Recreation 2023 Year in Review presentation. We will invite the Swim Fort Lauderdale Masters team, and I would like to also invite Carl Williams, the Parks and Recreational Director, to begin this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, and all. Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. And joining me is Laura Vogt, our Aquatic Center Manager. It's timely here that we're having these here awards and acknowledgements. We have a very nice turnout here, and we're really excited to share some important news and accomplishments from not only our athletes, but also one of our coaches, Bill.
Can I ask all the folks in blue, come on up, then sit up the chairs over here so we can see who you are and appreciate who you are?
Come on down.
Come on down. You want to sit up in the front rows? Bill, you can stay there, you can stay there. Where's your blue shirt? Now, these are the members of the Masters team. There's seats over here, too?
All right, and while you all are seating, Laura here will provide some details that you all will be excited about.
Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, thank you very much. So, we wanted to provide a year in review as our first year here at the new Aquatic Center, and our Swim Fort Lauderdale Masters Swimming Team has had a fabulous year. And there's three things in particular that we would like to recognize our Masters Swimming Team for. And the first one is that they won the United States Swimming National Team Championships for Masters Swimming, and we're congratulating them for winning this title at the Summer National Championships in Sarasota, Florida this last August, that included over 1,000 athletes from 211 clubs. Fort Lauderdale sent a team of 143 athletes, they swam 659 races to capture the team title at the event that included two world records in the men's 200-meter medley relay and the 200-meter freestyle relay. This was set by the team of Andre Steinberg, Timothy Shade, Hubie Kearns, and Bruce Williams. And Hubie is here today.
Please stand up, please stand.
Two world records, new world record. So this is the seventh national club championship for Fort Lauderdale since 2010. So we won in 2010, 2014, 15, 16, 17, 2021, and 2023. So congratulations, Fort Lauderdale, on your seventh national club title. The second thing that we would like to recognize the club for is that just recently, the Pan American Games were held in Santiago, Chile, and that also included the Paralympic Games. And if I could have Abbas Karimi and Coach Marty Hendrick come up here just to recognize them, we'd like to congratulate. Coach Marty Hendrick was appointed to the United States National Team as a coach, and Abbas Karimi, who represented Team USA at the Parapan American Games, Abbas brought home two bronze medals, and he is on his way to the next championship internationally representing Fort Lauderdale, we're very proud of them, so congratulations for that. And the last item that we would like to recognize our Masters Swimming Team for is especially going to Coach Marty Hendrick, who received the National Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award from United States Masters Swimming this last year. The diversity, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award is presented annually to the athletes, coaches, volunteers, or clubs who show a public commitment to diversity, equity, equality, and inclusion across race, gender, age, religion, identity, and ability at the club, local zone, or national level. This award recognizes individuals or clubs that create a diverse and inclusive environment in the United States, thereby making everyone feel empowered to bring their full, authentic, unique selves to the sport. Swim Fort Lauderdale Masters Coach Marty Hendrick's tireless efforts, creativity, energy, support, and self-sacrifice towards diversity, inclusion, and the welfare of our swim team members is extraordinary. We have team members hailing from 34 countries and 17 languages are spoken on the team. Notably, when foreign athlete and paraswimmer needed a new coach, Abbas Karimi, Marty said yes, and he made the biggest commitment of his life and career. He learned, he learned a new sport in the paraswimming and gained a new friend and member of his swim family. Now Abbas Karimi, who was once an Afghanistan refugee, he's a Paralympian, a world champion, a United States citizen, and a member of Team USA. Abbas has now been reunited with his family in the United States, and this is due in large part to Marty and Swim Fort Lauderdale's unfailing leadership dedication and the support of all the team members that have created a team where everyone is welcome. Congratulations. Marty has, Marty and Abbas would like to pass out some, the national team patches for each. for each of you for the national team.
Congratulations. Thank you. You bring great honor and distinction to our community. Thank you, everybody, for being on the team, and we have a beautiful Masters Program here at our facility, and I know it's gonna keep growing as we all get older, right? But thank you all. Thank you for bringing this distinction to our community. We thank you. I'm sorry?
I think there's an age limit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, I'm so sorry. Okay, okay. Okay. It's a little joke. It's a little joke. Just a little joke. A little joke. Calm down.
Okay. Anyway, thank you all for being here tonight, and congratulations to everybody. Thank you. Will we sit again? Okay. Before we go to consent, I'd like to take one moment just, this will be very quick. Renee Manchoy, could you come to the dais, please? Renee? Renee? Don't be shy. There better be a cookie involved in this one.
Normally, I do this in conference, but we don't have any conference today. I prepared a whole statement. Happy birthday.
We could have put that on the consent item. Okay, happy birthday. We won't ask you how old, but that's okay. Okay, now we come to the consent agenda portion of our, of our evening tonight, and the purpose of this section of our meeting is to, is for the Commission to address all items and vote on them one at a time, excuse me, all at once, instead of one at a time. However, if a Commissioner, a member of the Commission wishes to pull a consent item, we will vote on it separately and discuss it separately. And if you hear an item has been pulled that you're here to talk about tonight, then we would ask that you wait for that item to be taken up, and you'll have that opportunity to speak at that time. If your item has not been pulled and you wish to speak, please, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and we'll invite you to come to the podium and speak at that before we vote. So right now, I'd ask Commissioner Herbst, do you have any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull? You do not. Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor?
None tonight.
None? I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
CR1. CR3. CP2.
Okay, CR1, CR3, and CP2. Okay? So Trish Holliday, CP2 is being pulled, so when that we come up to, where's Trish? When we come up to that, I'd like you to come and speak. Okay, CR1, Commissioner?
Do you want to, do we go through the, all the ones and then come back to this?
I'd like you to speak about CR1.
Okay, we'll do it that way. That's fine. CR1, is that the stormwater, this, I have a, just a quick question for point of information. Why are they abandoning a project on Southeast First and Second Street? This would be, this would be Allen, or who would, who would this go to?
Which, which part of CR1 is?
What letter is this, Commissioner?
Item D.
Thank you.
It's just a quick question, that's all.
This is on Ponce de Leon Drive Stormwater Improvement Project.
Thank you, Allen.
Mayor, Colonel. Sorry. Allen Pollard Works Director. The project that we had was something that had been programmed several years earlier, and we were incorporating into other projects that we had planned. So that's why we're, we're not doing it under this project, but we will still be addressing the concerns in that area.
Okay, thank, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Nothing further on that?
No, that's, just, that was all I wanted.
Okay.
CR3?
CR3.
Parks, if they could come up just for a second. Again, this is a very simple question. You talk about golf. Does it apply to disc golf also? Yeah.
Yeah, this particular one deals specifically with golf that we have at Oswald.
Okay, but I just want to make it clear that when we pass this, it does not apply to, this one for the record does not apply to disc golf.
Correct.
I knew that, I just wanted, for purposes of clarification. Thank you so much.
And CP2.
Okay, I've had, Allen, I hate to bring you up again, but a couple, several people were concerned about flooding east of Third Avenue. I mean, this stops at Third. Could you just address flooding east of Third Avenue?
Commissioner, is this the Sewall Project?
Yes.
And so the, the total Riverwalk Sewall Project is, is more than a $20 million project. And so as we are looking at doing it within the funding available, this is a section that is most in repair, so it's about a $4 million project that we are moving forward on. This is the design for that first segment of the Riverwalk.
Apparently, that section east of Third is an issue, so when going forward, I'd like to, if we can make that a priority as we go forward, I appreciate that.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Colonel.
Okay, Trish, did you want to speak on this? Trish Holliday? Can you push the button in front of you?
It's good now?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I understand that you have already picked out the consultants, which is wonderful. I had some questions for the consultants. All of the, the meetings that I go to, and that we have gone to, that Suzanne, I've gone to with the Residents for Resilience, the county meetings, you know, they have flood mitigations and, and the sea rises seem to be the main concern and main topic of conversation. And with the data constantly changing, I just want that to be a main concern and be reminded that the, you know, the recommendations for the flood, that the flood-prone areas, I want just for you to be, I don't want this, and I know that, that Dr. Gasman was on your, your meeting yesterday, and she says that these will be fine until 20, until 2070, 2070. However, with this data changing consistently, I don't want you to be doing this and then having to redo it down the line. This is gonna be interesting. I would really like to talk to the consultants, if they're here. Are they here?
The consultants aren't here, no.
They're not here? Okay. My other question is, are they going to be green? Are we gonna have any, because I know at one point, Dr. Gasman had said that anything done in the future, we're gonna be having some kind of a green constitution, and since we're going with the Fort, Fortified Lauderdale, I didn't know if you were gonna be doing anything along those lines.
So Dr. Gasman's not here tonight, but you can turn to Colonel Dodd behind you, and I'm sure he can help you try to answer that question.
Okay.
All righty.
All righty. Thank you.
Was there anything else?
Those were my, my concerns, and I just hope, going forward with those individuals that were concerned about the east, towards the east, those same condition, you know, same concerns are, you know, are, are, are the same. You know, I just, you know, I'm sorry, I was not, you know, I didn't think we were gonna do it, but.
Okay. No problem.
I'll talk to him.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, would someone like to move, would someone like to move the consent agenda items?
Some moved.
Second.
They've moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
So before I vote on this, I just want to bring up one issue.
So there is.
CP2?
CR3, actually. So I'm, I'm voting for it. I'm voting for the entirety consent agenda. But in my conversations with staff, one of the things that I've asked them to take a look at is the Parks and Rec Rule that forbids people bringing dogs into our parks. This is something that I've raised with city staff many times through the years. It's a Parks and Rec Rule that, that prohibits dogs in our city parks, and I've pointed out to them that Broward County allows dogs in the parks, New York City allows dogs in the parks, San Francisco, Chicago, LA, in fact, every major city allows dogs in their parks. I know they, they were concerned that perhaps there may be negative interactions between other patrons of the parks and the dogs, but again, if 8 million people in New York City can manage to coexist with dogs, I think we can manage it in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So I've asked them to come back and revisit that with us in the future. So I'll be voting in favor of the entire consent agenda, but since we don't have Commission reports today, I'm using this as an opportunity to express that issue that I want to have come forward for us at a future time. Thanks.
Okay. It's a maintenance thing, anyway, is it not, Carl? Because people don't pick up after their dogs? What is the issue there?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. So there is a slight maintenance. I mean, we would be including dog bags to pick up and, you know, we can install those. There is a cost that I mentioned to Commissioner previously, but that's something that we can certainly do.
Okay, we can, we can revisit that. Okay. I mean, people take their, take their dogs to these parks anyway. I mean, I see them all the time, so.
Correct. Well, I have been chased out of the park by our park rangers with my dog, and so.
Was it their dog that they were chasing after?
I'm not quite sure.
What were you doing in the park?
I did offer to carry the dog and see if that would accommodate their concerns, but he's 70 pounds, and he gets heavy after a little while, so.
Okay.
I love my pit, but he gets a little heavy.
And one, one quick question also. This came up in my neighborhood.
Of course it does, absolutely.
There's a dog policy, but no ordinance per se with dogs. It's actually by policy, correct?
So it's a park rule. It's a park rule we had in place for a while.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl. All right. So it's been moved and seconded, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the consent agenda items are now approved. If any of you are here on those items, you're welcome to leave or stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. But thank you all for being here tonight. Okay, moving on to motions. Subvention approving the event agreements and related road closures for the 36th Annual La Sola's Art Fair, January and March 2024, and the Tik Tok Dance Party with Santa. No one signed up to speak. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and, and one's approved. Motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for the Super Bowl at Smitty's. Desiree, you signed up to speak, but for questions only. Where are you? Are you still here? Ah, there you are. Can I just say one thing? My only concern is, you've got a very popular place, and I just want to make sure that you have enough attendance at this party so that the, your guests don't find themselves, you know, sprawling all over the, the area to the detriment of the homeowners that live around there. So if you could kind of give us some assurance that you might hire extra security staff to be sure that driveways are not, are not blocked, or sidewalks are not, you know, parked on, because I know this will be a very popular event. Thank you for doing this. I think it's gonna be fun, but just whatever you could do to help us on that, we'd appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could just, also, because it came up at my district meeting as well, so Desiree, just, just as some assurance, because I know the Super Bowl's on that Sunday, but this, this is for three nights of the event, right? It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday till 1:00 AM, which is typically longer than we do events, but have all the neighborhoods been met with and everyone's good?
Well, I had my pre-agenda meeting on last evening. The community was in support of this. I haven't had anyone to call me and say that they have a problem with the timeline. Everyone seems to be excited about the opportunity.
Great.
So the community is in support.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Okay, someone like to move the item?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M2 is now approved. M3, motion approving an event agreement, related road closure, and request for music exemption for downtown's New Year's Eve bash. No one signed up to speak? Someone like to move the item?
Some moved.
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M4, motion authorizing purchase of reinsurance for a self-funded medical plan, Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company. No one signed up to speak? Anyone, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M4 is now approved. M5, motion accepting, excuse me, a motion authorizing the acceptance of a drainage easement dedication by the School Board of Broward County to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Sun 101 Northwest 15th Avenue. No one has signed up to speak? Someone like to move the item?
Some moved.
They've moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M5 is approved. R1, Resolutions. This is the appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the names into the record?
Yes. For the December 19th resolutions, Citizens Police Review Board, Paul Eichner, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Community Services Board, Wisme Seas, nominated by Commissioner, Commissioner Glassman. 2024 Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gina Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And for tonight's resolution, Aviation Advisory Board, Ed Quoka, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Code Enforcement Board, Olivier Call, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Downtown Development Authority, Alan Hooper, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Economic Development Advisor Board, Russ Clennett, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Michelle Heiser, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And Parks, Recreation, and Beaches Board, Barbara McGill, nominated by Commissioner Sturman, and that rounds it out.
Okay. Are there any additions or modifications? They're being done. Someone like to introduce a resolution?
So introduce.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, when made part here of. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. I want to thank all those individuals for their commitment to our community and for your sacrifice on our behalf. R2, this is a resolution authorizing the execution of an underground electric utility facilities easement with Florida Power and Light Company. This is a part of the Dorsey River Bend Stormwater Improvements Project at 515 Northwest 15th Avenue. No one has signed up to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this? Nope. Please call the roll. Oh, wait, someone please introduce the resolution. That might help.
Introduce.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an easement in favor of Florida Power and Light Company over a city-owned property located at 515 Northwest 15th Avenue, authorizing city manager to execute and deliver the easement, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Moving on to R3, this is a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 23-261 and declaring notice of intent to sublease city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Section 813 of the City Charter to Ishoff Peninsula LLC. We have one person, Chris Nelson, are you here? Oh, there you are.
Hello, Commissioner Chris Nelson, and first I just want to thank Commissioner Sturman for his excellent Zoom calls he's been having before these meetings, going over the agenda. It's so informative. It's so informative. I have not seen a commissioner do something like that, and that is just very much appreciated, Commissioner Sturman. Now, with this, it's, I think what we're doing here is rescinding something, this land lease, and I believe this is something that Commissioner Sturman said, hey, let's take a look at this before we rush this through. And now we're back to having to rescind this. So I see a lot of things on the commission that are just rushed right through, and I think that sometimes you should just take a look and just make sure making the right decision so you don't have to come back and do something like rescind this. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nelson, I believe this is only a rescission because of the fact that the name of the entity has changed. It's just a technicality, really. It's not really rescinding the action, but they have, the principals have just changed their name from a not-for-profit to a for-profit. So that's really what this is all about.
Okay. I think Commissioner Sturman said something about this before, to take a look at, to just take a look at this before. It says something with the IRS here, with how it's set up with them, with the tax code and.
Well, I don't think we had that discussion yet. We've had discussions about the Swimming Hall of Fame project, but we never really had a discussion about these entities changing the names.
Okay. All right. Well, I still think that just sometimes to slow your roll and then we might not have to be back doing things like this.
Slow your roll.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
Do we not have, what's it called? Oh, yeah, discussion?
Oh, go right ahead.
Okay. Let's look at it first of all. This was a thing that was, like Chris said, shoved through so quick in three days. They have to start renaming it. Now there's an LLC. Ischoff Peninsula LLC, we're going to be entering into agreement with an LLC. That LLC doesn't exist. I can't find it on SunBiz. Again, we're rushing through, and now we're going to rush through again, and we're going to make another mistake. Does that, is it even on SunBiz? And number two, we're going from 30 to 50 years. This is not just a name change. I think this is changing the agreement also. Is that correct?
Tom, do you want to respond?
That is correct. The understanding for me why it's an LLC is because they had some issues with, oh, I think maybe Susan can explain it. Are you coming up, Susan, to do that?
I'm ready.
Okay, well, you'll have to clean up before we hear that. But they had some issues with the 501(c)(3) that was named originally in the original resolution. They withdrew using that for tax issues, and have now opened an LLC. I believe it's going to, if it hasn't been reported to SunBiz, it will be. Otherwise, this will not be accurate, and it will not go through. And then the 30 to 50 year, I think you have the answer to that, if you can, there's a little more detail of that.
Hello there. Good evening. Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. So as the city attorney said, we had brought this item to you, I think, a couple meetings ago, and it was two notices of intent to enter into those leases, one with the International Swimming Hall of Fame and the second with Ischoff Properties. After that happened, they had some internal issues or discussions and decided to change it from a not-for-profit to a for-profit. Thus, the rescission and the new notice of intent. As I said, these are just notices of intent. The actual sublease with Ischoff will be brought to you at the next meeting, that second meeting in December, and then this, the actual sublease will be brought back to you at the first meeting in January. As far as the change in terms, initially, we said 30 years because that was the length of the comprehensive agreement, but it didn't take into account the extensions. So what this would allow would be up to 50 years, which is the maximum we could do, but the sublease will indicate that it will be consistent with any of the renewals on the comprehensive agreement. So if the comprehensive agreement isn't renewed, it would stay at the 30 years.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm not done.
Okay.
Number one, and Mr. Tom, Tom.
I'm sorry. We're concerned about if it's not on SunBiz yet.
Why are we doing an agreement with a company that technically doesn't exist? Again, rushing it through?
Well, we're just talking about that. Maybe we'd want to defer on that issue until it exists.
Number one. And number two, 30 to 50 years, it's not in the title there. It's buried somewhere. Nobody knows about this. Oh, we just go for 30 to 50 years? That's not a minor thing. I mean, again, we, I don't feel comfortable rushing this through again. I do not feel comfortable voting on this, to be honest with you, at all.
Tom, can you clarify? Because Susan said something that the 50 years is not guaranteed. It's an option, but I just want to make sure that this is 30 years with the option to go.
My understanding is relatively new to it, as you can imagine. It's a 30-year term with six, excuse me, three six-year renewals. So they wanted to combine all three into the 30-year plus the 18, taking up to, actually, 48 plus two would take you to 50 years. That's what they've asked for.
But is that a guarantee, the 50 years, or is that just an option for the city to renew or not?
I believe that's the term.
Well, why don't we, okay, I'm now beginning a little uncomfortable with this too, so why don't we defer this item if we can?
That's fine, especially since he points out.
And then we can firm up these questions and.
And as Mr. Sturman's pointed out, if it doesn't exist as an entity, it's a little reluctant to do it.
Well, it's an intent to sublease anyways. We're not signing anything.
Right. Correct. But even if it doesn't exist, maybe we should just wait till it does exist and do that.
So Susan, can you answer that question, though, anyway, just so I have clarification on that?
Yeah, when the sublease eventually comes to you, it will be, it will be consistent, it will be 30 years plus whatever extension. So it'll be consistent with the comprehensive agreement. So up to 50 years, and again, it would be subject to the renewals being exercised in the comprehensive agreement. So that's what will come to you with the sublease when we bring it to you.
So it's not changing the terms?
Right.
It's just memorializing the terms?
Clarifying that it's consistent with the comprehensive agreement.
But, which we have already done.
Correct.
But again, I just want to ask the question, 50 years is only if the commission renews after the 30.
That is correct.
So the commission has the option of not renewing after the 30?
Correct. So it's three six-year options.
Thank you.
Could we clarify that for one second? So these are not, with a lot of these renewals, it's, the renewals are somewhat automatic, you know, cannot unreasonably be withheld. So do we actually have the ability not to renew this at that point in time? I haven't, I haven't seen the terms of renewal, so that I don't know what the renewal language actually says.
I can't tell you I'm acquainted with the agreement, but I will be before we come back.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to know if they're, you know, perfunctory, or if there is actually an opportunity to not renew. I'd just like some clarity on that.
Yes, sir. Okay, so R3 will be deferred, and our city attorney will bring that back at a future meeting.
Mayor, I just want to add something to this conversation. I expressed this to the city attorney when I saw this. So I just want to make sure that staff understands that I would prefer not to see any changes that are substantive come out an hour before a meeting, or two hours before a meeting, or the day of the meeting. I understand if we've got some Scrivener's errors that we need to correct and we bring forward revised items, that happens all the time. That's fairly standard and routine. But anything that changes the substantive nature of something that I've been reviewing all weekend and discussing with the community and my district and everything else, I don't want to see that come at the last minute. I can't do this. I can't, you know, talk to the community and explain to them what the agenda item is and then vote on something that is, again, substantively different the next day without some advance notice on this. So if, again, if it's anything of that order of magnitude, let's make sure that we don't do this at the last minute. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, R4, we're going to take up after OSR1. R5, this is a quasi-judicial resolution approving a site plan Level 2 development permit and design deviation requests, 201 North Federal Highway. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. We have a few people sign up to speak on that. And Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Come back around for me. I'm looking through my notes here.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, meeting with Stephanie Toothaker.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I met with Stephanie Toothaker on December 5th, 2022, and April 20th, 2023. I also met with Delmar, Jake Wurzak, and Charles Palu on November 28th, 2023, and a site visit. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Sturman?
I met with Stephanie Toothaker, did a site visit, met with Jake Wurzak, I met with the manager, and I met with the owner of Delmar.
Okay. You met with the new owner of Delmar, you said?
Well, I don't know if he's the new or the older, but I met with somebody who identified himself as the owner of Delmar.
Through the name? Jake? Is there a new owner?
No.
Okay. Well, it's important, because if you met with somebody, it's important to know what they're.
I met with your general manager, too. Who was that? Did I speak to you twice? I must have spoken to you twice. Okay, I misunderstood. So I met him twice.
Okay. All right.
And Mayor, yes.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I did, who did I speak to?
Jake Wurzak.
And you are?
Carlos Wurzak.
Okay, I met with, I spoke to both of you, correct? Okay, good.
So and Mayor, I spoke with Stephanie on, and her clients, on November 29th, and I also spoke with Jake last night.
Okay. Any further disclosures? Okay, I also spoke with Stephanie Toothaker, as well as Jake Wurzak, and people from his, from his team. And I think that's, I also spoke with Ms. Toothaker's client about a year ago. So, okay, and I think that's it. Now, several people have signed up to speak, so I'm going to call your names three at a time. If you could please come to the podium, I'll give you a couple minutes, and we'll start with Stephanie Toothaker. If you could please make a short presentation on behalf of the applicant. Hello, Senator. Did you bring any samples tonight, Senator? We asked you last time to bring samples.
I told the first crew to.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Stephanie Toothaker and Chris Smith on behalf of Naftali Group, the project at 201 North Federal Highway. I do want to mention also that our entire team is here. We have ownership with Naftali Group here, and the architects and engineers and consultants are all here as well, so we're all happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know you're very familiar with the project. Thank you for meeting with us, and thank you for your consideration this evening. I don't know how to change. There we go. So the project, this is the front of the project, which faces Second Avenue, and you can see Federal Highway on the right. I know you're all very familiar with it. In this image, you can see Delmar behind us, and behind that is the approved project that is Deafma 20s Project. So this is just a list of all the folks that are involved that are here this evening. The site, of course, is an L-shaped site, and you can see here on this image that the Delmar is behind us. There's also an empty lot in between this site and the L portion of the, of the project itself. These are just images of the existing site. I know you're familiar with it again. It's a tire, existing tire store, and of course, you see the Delmar in these images. And this is the alley. This is the portion of the Delmar that will face the portion of our building. So their back of house faces essentially back of house for the 201 project. So you can see it's a blank wall with a mechanically ventilated garage. This is a, looking down at the images of what this project looks like. You can see here, we have a very generous plaza on the corner of Second and Federal Highway. The entrance to the building is on the Second Street side, very generous entrance. It includes some valet operations and whatnot, retail that faces Federal Highway, and of course, the outline of the Delmar. It's in the downtown rack. It's Rack CC. It's intended for the most intense development in Fort Lauderdale. And this is just a gridx image for the project itself, and it shows you the context of all the projects that are approved in this area. So it's obviously in line with the other projects that have been approved, and many of which have been built. So we're asking for two deviations from the master plan this evening. When the project first started, we had a large number of deviations that we were looking at. We worked really hard to remove a number of those deviations, went through multiple redesigns of the project, and brought those deviations to only two requests. The first deviation request is for street wall length. So the street wall length is only on the Second Street side. So the side that faces the hotel does not need a deviation, only the side that's on the south side, and the building faces south. And the second deviation is for the floor plates, and I'm going to show you images in a couple of minutes that explain that a little bit, a little bit more. But the building, in every other aspect, meets all requirements of the master plan. So this is, street wall is the facade that is facing Second Street, as I said, and there's also a 10-foot alley between this project and the hotel. Just showing you some images from the master plan and how this project complies. So there is a 60-foot separation between the towers. That's a little bit, was a little bit confusing in the staff report, so I just wanted to make that clear, that it does meet the separation, the building separation. And there is 63 feet between this tower and the backside of the Delmar project. And this also shows you that the Delmar project built to the property line, and this project also builds to the property line, but there is a 10-foot alley between them. That's compliant with the master plan. with the master plan. That's what the master plan speaks to. So again, the same image that shows that there's an empty lot that is to our north and to the west of the Del Mar. And this is just an image that shows you how wide that sidewalk, that pedestrian experience that happens along Federal Highway. You can see we have a very large plaza. So this is just a cut image. There's a 12-foot sidewalk that's along Federal. And this is just an image of what the entrance area to the project looks like. This is what faces Second Street. There are some shade trees there, a lot of shading that happens along that Second Street entrance. So again, I'm just showing you another image, showing you that 60-foot tower separation. And in this image, you can start to see, this is where the deviations start to make a little bit of sense. So, the garage itself is totally compliant with the master plan. So everything you see from the, at the garage, that's what the master plan speaks to. Our amenity deck that includes a yoga studio and a lot of activity for the residents of the project, that happens on the 10th floor, so that is a deviation request. So that 10th floor that goes all the way across both the podium, that's what we need a deviation for. That's the first part of the deviation, that 10th floor. And the second part of the deviation is for the towers themselves. So the towers are slightly larger than what the master plan speaks to. The first section of them are actually compliant, and then as you get higher, the master plan speaks to a 12,500-square-foot floor plate, and these are slightly larger than that. And the deviation request that is in your backup includes outdoor spaces, so it includes the balconies. And just another image of the entrance. Am I going the wrong way here? Sorry, sorry about that. Just an image at night, again, showing the 60-foot tower separation, the amenity level. You can see it a little better here when it's lit up, and the towers. Just some, just some beautiful images of the project designed by Architectonica. And they're all here. Architectonica is all here this evening. Shade trees. This is the front entrance of the building along Second. More along Second. You can see the retail, maybe a restaurant, something really nice for the neighborhood. Very wide, generous plaza that happens on the corner of Second and Federal. Just some more images of that. We do have, the garage is lined with units as well. And just some other additional images. This is the entrance on Third. And again, the project in the context of the area. So, we have, we've just created some additional images that show the alley that's behind the project. This is an important image because this shows you, so one thing that's very important to this project is that the garage is not mechanically ventilated. Mechanically ventilated garages are noxious, they're loud. It's wonderful if you don't have to do it. And the way that you do that is by leaving some of the portion of the garage open. So the portion of the garage that's left open is below, below the pool deck of the Del Mar, and it's the area that you can't see. It faces their back of house to our back of house. The portions of the garage that are screened, I'll show you a better image. So this is the Del Mar that we've superimposed onto this. And you can see the Del Mar's pool deck happens at the floor that you see on top of their podium. Del Mar's red. Del Mar's red. So, that, where it cuts in, where you see the stepback for the tower, that's where the pool deck happens. So the pool deck faces the garage screening. It doesn't face any of the open garage. What faces the open garage, and this is what the back of our project looks like, so you can see the screening on the garage, it's beautifully done. And actually, our own amenity deck also faces that portion of the garage. You can see there's the alley. So this is what, this is what the back of the Del Mar looks like. So this is what actually faces the back of our garage. Their back of house is to our back of house. And this is actually a video. You can't hear it very well, but you can hear the exhaust fans that are extremely loud, that pump the air from the garage into the alley, into the alley that's owned by the city of Fort Lauderdale. So, from the Del Mar, correct. Right under their pool deck. So immediately, immediately under their pool deck are their mechanically ventilated vents that push that hot air back out into the alley. And you can see that's the pool deck with the glass right above it. And we've shown you here, this is the site plan that was approved, and you can see everything that's outlined in red. Those are the mechanically ventilated screens that are pushing that hot air out, which we're very much trying to avoid. So one thing that we've talked about with some of you is maybe doing something a little bit different on the garage screening, so we're happy to offer that. We're happy to offer to include some additional decorative architectural or landscaping or lighting element on the upper floors of the parking garage. So we've offered that as a voluntary condition to be addressed before final DRC. And just some final images of the project, and that is, that concludes the presentation, and Chris and I are here, the team is here to answer any questions that you have.
Chris, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make at this time? You're good. Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Stand by as these other people look to speak. So we have the following people who have signed up to speak. I'll call your names three at a time. Jason Martin, Carlos Salazar, and Chris Nelson. Are you folks still in the room?
Yeah.
It's on. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Jason Manton. I'm a resident of Fort Lauderdale. I'm an attorney. I own multiple businesses in Fort Lauderdale, but most importantly, I'm a local native to Fort Lauderdale. And prior to the Del Mar being built in this portion of Federal Highway, no one would go into that area at all for any sort of high-end or first-class hospitality or dining experience that the Del Mar offers. By allowing this variance, you guys are gonna, if you do approve this variance, you will be setting a precedent that is not a very good look for this city. Unfortunately, the benefit of that variance outweighs, it just does not, you know, it really hurts the Del Mar by benefiting this new project. I am not opposed to the development of the city. I am not opposed to, you know, this project. I am opposed to, you know, the detrimental effect it will have on the Del Mar.
Are you an attorney for Del Mar?
No, I'm not an attorney. I'm a private citizen.
Okay, okay, good night.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, disclose that I am an attorney, but I am not advocating on behalf of anybody here tonight. I'm just a concerned citizen, and I don't think that this is a, you know, a proper precedent to be set in the city, that yes, we've grown, but prior to the Del Mar, no one would venture in that area. You know, I can remember going in that area, and it's been a great addition to the community.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Carlos Salazar, followed by Chris Nelson, followed by Jake Wurzak.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. My name is Carlos Salazar. I'm a resident of Fort Lauderdale. I also happen to be manager-director of the Del Mar, and have a first perspective of how this would affect us, obviously. First and foremost, certainly behind every continuous improvement and development in Fort Lauderdale. For the last eight years that I live in Fort Lauderdale, I've been witnessing, witnessing a tremendous development that has benefited all of them. But the Del Mar has been a bastion of development, hospitality for downtown, and I believe that this project, with the excessive overriding the limitations that are, that they're requesting, not only would it affect us directly, affecting guest experience, you know, as the project was described, and the garage, well, I would say that most, 50% of a guest view will be towards the garage and the back of the building. So that way, limiting one of the best amenities that we have in the hotel. I truly believe that the Del Mar has been a leader in hospitality, responsible in developing a, development that fosters and continues the growth of Fort Lauderdale. So, I think that the project is obviously welcomed, but it has to have some control, and that goes in continuity of what we've done in general in Fort Lauderdale. So I will urge you to reconsider and limit their request to what is officially authorized.
Let me ask you a question. What is it that's being requested tonight that you feel that if it's not, if this commission does not approve, what do you feel is going to, the building is going to look like? I mean, clearly, they're going to be able to build something, correct?
Correct. I think the agreement is, I think we're all in agreement that the building will continue, is the size of the podium that were obscured, the pool portion of the hotel, and 50% of the view of a guest. Guest rooms are located north and south. So the majority of our guest rooms, there will be obstructed by the building. And the, as I understand, and the separation of buildings, or the buildings exceeded the regulation.
Well, let's start with your first comment. So, the podium is nine stories tall with an amenities deck on top. What part of that you feel is, if it was brought back to the, what the code permits, where would that leave the building?
Well, I think it's mostly, and as the podium continues, the pool view is directed to the garage. 30% of the guest rooms have a view obstructed that is now there, and the separation of the podium...
Well, let me see if I understand this correctly. Can this developer build a nine-floor podium for parking? Forget the amenities deck. Can they, is the code allow them to build up to nine floors for the podium?
Well, I think that you're very qualified to answer that. I'm pretty sure that it does.
What's that?
I believe it does, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that's going to be there regardless. So I think that the goal here is to see what we can do to try to make the face, the north face of the building more attractive to the amenities deck of the Del Mar, since the nine stories is permitted anyway. The 10th floor is, you know, I don't think that's an offensive part to the Del Mar. It's the nine, it's the nine floors of parking that we're concerned with.
Correct.
And it so happens that the Del Mar's amenities deck is on the sixth floor. So they've got three floors of parking that they're going to be facing. So I believe Ms. Toothaker has indicated that as an amendment to the application, the developer would agree to put some sort of creative design or some kind of landscaping or lighting element there to help out the view of those who are going to be on the amenities deck of the Del Mar. So, I'm just trying to see, you know, what is it that you're looking for us to change that would, that would bring it more to the satisfaction of the Del Mar?
As my understanding, the actual size of the deck, the podium, rather, exceeds the limitations of the building, meaning the length of the deck. So that will be something that I would urge you...
Length, not the height.
The length, well, the height is, I think you addressed it.
Right, but the length?
Correct.
It's an extra 99 feet, right?
Correct.
Right. So that's on the north, that's on the west side, is it not?
South side.
South side.
So it's completely...
Okay, all right.
Engalls, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, could I just ask one question? Yeah, go right ahead, go right ahead. Have you been in conversation with representatives from the project? Have they reached out to you? Have you worked, have they, you know, met with you, talked about your concerns?
Not personally, no.
Have they met, have they met with anybody from the Del Mar?
Probably ownership.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, followed by Jake Wurzak, followed by Ian Reardon. Mike Kulik is just for questions only. Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Chris Nelson.
Is your mic on?
It is now.
Okay, great.
All right, Chris Nelson and...
Not that we couldn't hear you, not that we couldn't hear you.
Oh, yeah, you can hear me anyway. So, I live in a condo right down the road from these two majestic towers that are about to go up. And I'm just thinking, why not a nice little park there if we're going to be moving this stuff, if we're going to get rid of Tires Plus? Because, you know, with all the rainfall and everything like that, and I don't know if you noticed, knew this, but green spaces actually suck up water. So, when we have these giant rainstorms, then, you know, we don't have any green spaces. There's nowhere for the water to go. So, if you're wondering, solve that problem. But of course, that's crazy. We couldn't have a park.
The developer's here. You can have that conversation. He's sitting over there.
I know. So, we're really working hard to turn Fort Lauderdale into brickle, basically. And I had the same questions as this last gentleman. Why are these changes necessary? These, the applicant seeing a deviation request to permit a building length 399 feet, 5 inches along the Second Street, exceeding the maximum building length of 300 feet by 99 feet and 5 inches? Well, why were those limitations put in in the first place, is my question? So, I think that it needs to be justified why these, why these special exemptions are being granted. And then also, if you're, okay, you're talking about the tunnel this afternoon, which it doesn't look like we're getting a tunnel. Let me just, let's just be honest. From that commission meeting, it did not look like it. So, but you're going to have a bridge or a tunnel going up. So you're going to have that. You're just finished with the Kenny Tunnel, which that took years and years. So finally, that's going to be finished. Now we're going to be driving up, and now we're going to have this going on up the road. Plus, you want to dig up Los Olas Boulevard. Plus, you want to have the bridge and tunnel thing going on. Are these projects all going to be going on at the same time? And if you thought of what that would do for traffic, have you thought of what all these combined projects would do if we have another catastrophic flood, okay? And just, I just recommend that you look into those things before you rush head-on into digging up all these things and putting up all these giant buildings and trying to turn us into brickle or whatever your vision is for Fort Lauderdale here. And then just think about, where is the water going to go? Do we have the sewage system right for this? Because we got a lot of floods, and we do. City Hall, why are we here? Because City Hall got flooded. So just, I just recommend that you take all these things into consideration when you make this decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, just a fact check, Mr. Nelson, because it's important. Facts are important. So, a lot of the flooding that you've talked about, just so you know, in the more developed areas where infrastructure has been paid attention to, we had less problems than in the undeveloped areas where sometimes there actually is more green space. It was an interesting phenomenon. And City Hall is an example of that. Old building, didn't have the capacity. Much of the infrastructure that is corrected and improved is actually borne by the responsibility of the developer on these projects for all of that water, wastewater, stormwater. That is all taken into consideration. If you look at the backup, you'll see exactly what is expected and the conditions for the developer to make sure that the capacity is there for these projects.
Well, I saw a lot of cars floating down Broward Boulevard and Davy Boulevard, and that was in the well-developed area. And just in this last flood, it was flooding all over the place, right down at Broward Boulevard and Andrews. So, it just, and really, with City Hall, I mean, everybody else fills out an insurance claim and fixes things, but with you guys, it was, oh, here's an opportunity to reimagine City Hall, and we're going to build this grand new structure and everything. So I just, when the storm comes, okay, I'll be here to remind you that I stood here today, what's today, December 5th, or whatever it is, that I stood here today, and I just asked you guys to take that into consideration when you're turning our entire city to concrete and not leaving any green spaces. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Jake, followed by Ian Reardon. Do you want more, you want a few minutes because you're the next-door neighbor?
Yes, please.
Just take, take what time you need.
We're going to just set up. I didn't have a PowerPoint presentation. We, like old school, we got some poster boards for everyone to see. We're going to set these up.
That poster's blank, you know that.
It's a magic trick. We're going to flip it around with the big reveal.
You have to use your imagination. Well, we're going to invite you to take a magic marker, Commissioner, and...
Oh, like the, Christmas on Las Olas. That was pretty cool. We know you like dump trucks now.
Can the commission see? I want the commission to see. They're the... They're the ones that have the...
Can you want to tilt it a little bit?
We get the second one set up as well? We get the second one set up?
You want to tilt it a little bit this way so that Commissioner Herbst can see it better?
You want to put it in the center there?
No, it's, right there is fine. Oh, because of the podium?
Yes.
All right, so why don't you... Can you see that okay?
I'll start to not waste any more of your time. We're going to bring in another image. Just, I feel so much love tonight. There's all these people speaking out about the Del Mar. Ms. Toothaker's conversation spoke so much about the Del Mar. Good evening, esteemed members of the Fort Lauderdale City Commission, the mayor, and fellow citizens of our great city. I am Jake Wurzak, a devoted Harbor Beach District 4 resident, a committed business leader, and tonight, a fiercely concerned advocate for the soul of Fort Lauderdale's development standards and the primary growth engine of the city, tourism and hospitality. I stand before you as the owner of the Del Mar Hotel, threatened by the Naftali Group's development at 201 North Federal Highway. My company, Dove Hill Capital Management, owns 17 hotels throughout the country, four of which are in Broward County, three in Fort Lauderdale. My company is also headquartered in Fort Lauderdale. Tonight's conversation extends beyond a single development, and it speaks to the future of Fort Lauderdale. We stand at a pivotal crossroads where the objectives of out-of-state developers collide with the dedication of those who poured their passion into the city. The variances put forth by the Naftali Group go beyond mere deviations. They pose a direct challenge to the very essence that defines what makes Fort Lauderdale truly great. I urge you to oppose these deviations presented tonight by the developer of 201 North Federal. Here they are, right here. Here are concerns. As you know, in evaluating whether to approve a deviation from the zoning code, you need to ask yourself if what is being proposed is better than what the zoning code allows. As I will share, it's undoubtedly not. We've always valued community, conversation, and mutual support in Fort Lauderdale. This proposal, however, represents a stark departure from these values. Nine months ago, when I learned of this project on my own, I called the developer to express our concerns. The developer's response to that call, quote, "You do something for me, and I'll do something for you." Additionally, we've written two separate letters to the DRC notifying them of our issues. They are well aware. The mindset of the developer is not how we do things in Fort Lauderdale. It's unjust, not neighborly, and unacceptable. Permitting developers to exploit zoning codes and receive substantial deviations at the cost of local businesses and residents who have long been integral to the community is not the right way to proceed. Specifically, as it pertains to the Del Mar, if this development is built as proposed, it will have a disastrous effect on Fort Lauderdale's flagship downtown hotel. Why don't we put up our rendering, too? Because the views that were prepared so nicely based on all the conversation about the Del Mar were great, but we pulled all the images right from the DRC. So Tara, let's grab the rendering right there. As I mentioned, I live in Harbor Beach, and my commitment to the city is unwavering. I don't just live and work here. I invest in the community's heart and soul, from serving on the boards of the Broward Center for Performing Arts right here, the NSU Fort Lauderdale Museum of Art, to supporting Joe DiMaggio Children's Hospital. My actions speak louder than words. My family and I embody the spirit of Fort Lauderdale, and we are deeply invested in shaping the future of Fort Lauderdale. The Del Mar alone employs over 200 people. The Dalmar alone employs over 200 people. Both my business and my wife's business, which is also based in Fort Lauderdale, employ almost 500 people in Fort Lauderdale. 500 people. Most of those people are hourly team members in both of our companies. Let's cut to the chase. The proposed development by the Naftali Group at 201 North Federal isn't just another building. It's a looming shadow over the Dalmar, the jewel I brought to life from a mere vacant funeral home across the street from a dilapidated Greyhound bus station. The Dalmar is the city's only downtown experiential lifestyle hotel. When others doubted, I believed in the city, and the Dalmar sparked a renaissance in the downtown Flagler Village neighborhood. This Naftali project isn't a development. It's an outrageous affront to our city's character. As a resident, it's clear to me that the developer is trying to take advantage of all of us by jamming through this proposal in the week of, the month of Christmas, when everyone's out their holiday parties. And it's far too big and incompatible with the zoning requirements. The exhibits are from, that I'm gonna present tonight, are from the developer's own submissions right out of the DRC and highlight the egregious nature of their requests. They're not just bending the rules, but rewriting them at the Dalmar's expense. So here's a couple images. The yellow right there shows the Dalmar. The beautiful grid X proportion doesn't actually show the proportion of what that large dual tower will look compared to the Dalmar. We also, this is the only rendering you'll see tonight that I produced. We created a rendering of what the pool is gonna look like when we have this beautiful nine or 10-story parking garage to look at. Let's pull that up. Let me talk about our main concerns. The tower floor plate exceeds the maximum size. Street wall length exceeds the code by over 100 feet. So the left image is an actual picture we took. The right image, we took their exact rendering of what they're proposing for the garage. That's the screening detail, right out of, I think the inspiration was a bus depot in Arkansas, and we put it right there against the pool. I want to go into, draw you back to this board on the right. The maximum building street wall length, ah, it's just a simple 30% exaggeration of what's allowed by the code. 30%, 100 feet. It adds to the mass of the podium, which impacts the Dalmar. And it exceeds the code. The tower floor plate size on the 10th floor is 216% more than the zoning code allows. It says it right there. An increase of 39,000 square feet. Again, this isn't my stuff. This came right out of the DRC. This is on their documents. Now, let's go up the tower. Their floor plates are also getting larger, larger than the zoning code allows. By how much? 28% greater. Okay? So when we talk about building separation, the building separation really doesn't matter because the floor plate shouldn't be that big to begin with. And why do I care? I care because I don't have a view now. Their increase in the floor plates blocks our view, blocks our sunlight, blocks fresh air. It's terrible. So I can, we'll bring some of these visual representations we have up now. Here's the floor length, or the podium length, 100 extra feet. Sure, it's on Second Street, but you gotta have a square podium. You can't have an oddly shaped podium. So why not just bring it to 400 feet? That sounds about right. Just simple 30% larger. Let's take a look at the next one. Here's the really big one. This one is the one that's 216% more on the 10th floor. Why do we care? Well, our pool deck's on the sixth floor. So imagine what it's gonna be like when our guests are looking up four stories high, okay, at a big building. Now, sure, can they build that podium nine or 10 stories high? Absolutely. But if they stuck within the zoning code, the podium would be smaller, be smaller probably by 100 feet. Okay? And this area, the 10th floor, would be smaller than by 40,000 square feet. That's huge. Let's look at what the tower floor plates are gonna look like. We all, 60-foot separation, we're meeting that. Well, you meet that, right? But you have to grant the increase in the floor plate in order to get there. Why do they want to do that? Why do they want to increase the floor plates? Well, by our calculation, they get an extra 220 units. How's that benefit the city of Fort Lauderdale? I guess we have a lot of multifamily units, but these are market-run apartments. So is that gonna help the employees in my hotel find a place to live? I don't think so. Is that gonna hurt the Dalmar that was there first, that had a view through of the corridor? Certainly. Is it gonna block our sunlight? Certainly. It's exceeding the floor plate that's allowed by 28%. If we grant it for this developer, why not grant it for all the developers? Everyone should come back just because they want it. Doesn't add anything to the city. They don't have a hardship. I didn't hear any hardships that they have. They wanted to build a bigger building, they should have bought a bigger site. Here's the tower separation. If you want to talk about this, I guess, there's an interpretation that they're relying on that says the architectural detail, this big white thing, doesn't really count. Maybe that's so. But again, it's all moot. It only comes into play if the floor plates were increased. And sure, could you maybe keep the towers at 60 feet across and then shrink the floor plate? Absolutely. But I'd get more light and air and less shade if the building towers were smaller and they built it to the code. I promise, I'm moving this along. There's just so much to talk about. The, this is the beautiful architectural screening, and it's not gonna impact us at all because the back of house of this building that's nine or 10 stories high impacts our back of house. Well, our back of house, I guess, is five stories high. What about above that? The guest rooms that Carlos was talking about, the managing director of the hotel, will look right into this parking garage. Sure, they can build a podium that's this high. But is this really the architectural decoration that we want in our parking garages? These metal slats? And it's opened, right? It's opened all through levels one through nine. The whole parking garage is open. So while the owners only said the lower portion was open and screened, the whole thing is open. So we're gonna see lights and cars and all this stuff coming through. That's another thing I'm concerned about, the health and safety of our guests during construction. This building is 10 feet away from our pool. Okay? You gotta be the perfect little builder to build this building with no damaged tar building, no dust, no debris, no one getting hurt. Literally, the parking garage, 10 feet from our pool. Okay? So that little incident, that could happen. Here is another view. This is from their DRC. This is what they're proposing to screen. It's from the Garland Center in Fayetteville, Arkansas. Okay? I don't see the Miami Design District architectural, beautiful design thing from Architect Tonica. They went all the way to a parking garage in Dublin, Ohio to get this beautiful decoration. And that's what we're gonna be looking at. We must send a clear message tonight. Fort Lauderdale values its residents, business owners, and contributors. We cannot allow an out-of-state developer to steamroll over the interests of those who have been instrumental in building this community. The decision you make tonight will echo through the history of our city. We will stand, will we stand by our principles, or will we let transient interests redefine our skyline, our character, and our future? Consider the message we send about our city's values and vision if we permit a developer to overshadow a flagship hotel in downtown Fort Lauderdale. Allowing a project that not only exceeds the zoning code but also significantly jeopardizes the hotel's viability is contrary to our community's principles. These proposed deviations from the zoning code for the Naftali project are more than just excessive. They are an affront to our commitment to fair and responsible development. I strongly urge you to reject these variances and uphold the integrity of our city's planning standards. Thank you for the extra time, and you're considering the future of Fort Lauderdale.
Great, thank you so much. Ian Reardon?
Old school. Mayor, I'm actually an engineer with the team, just in case.
You're the engineer with what?
I'm an engineer on the, on the, on the team. I think you just thought of this.
Okay, so you're just here to answer questions? Okay. And Mike Kulik, just to answer questions also? Okay, great. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there being none. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes. So public hearing is now closed on this. So we'll start the conversation with the district commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to have Chris Cooper come up from DST. First, let me begin before I ask a few questions of Chris. This is, this was an interesting exercise for me, but I want to just flesh out some information from Chris that I think is important. At least it was important for me, and I still need to get some answers to some of this because I think it's crucial that we know what has happened in this area. So Chris, the Dalmar, and by the way, the Dalmar, an incredible, incredible addition to our downtown, an incredible addition to our hospitality industry, a beautiful, beautiful, stunning property. Explain for perhaps colleagues of mine that have come on a little bit more recently, what happened in the downtown core in terms of zoning? And what were the zoning codes when Dalmar was built versus what we're facing now with the downtown core? Because a significant change happened. And unfortunately, that's what we're getting caught into right now. But I want you to explain that.
Yes, so Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services Department. So in 2022, the city commission adopted and codified the downtown master plan, especially the quantitative aspects of it, the specific measurements and terms. So what that did was, well, I think what you're getting at is, we also at that time codified the character areas, and that character area for the downtown core was moved from Northwest First Street to Northwest Fourth Street. So what that did was it changed what could be developed north of First Street in terms of height and podium height. So prior to that, it was near downtown, and the max podium height was seven stories, and the max height of buildings was 30 stories. After that line was moved to northeast fourth, that increased to the podium height of nine stories and then the unlimited height based on FAA restrictions. So Dalmar was actually built prior to that change in the codification of the downtown master plan in 2022.
So Dalmar was obviously built under very different code, very different character area, very different downtown core area than what we're facing now in that immediate vicinity?
Yes.
Okay, and that's unfortunate, obviously, for Dalmar. There's nothing we can do about that.
Correct. I mean, it was built to the standards at the time it was applied to built.
Okay, so let me ask you this question. When we look at deviations or what some people call variances, I see there are two here. So let's talk about, let's talk about the length on the street, on the south side of the project. 300 feet is the maximum, and this is asking for 399. So what would happen, and by the way, when we consider these deviations, correct me if I'm wrong, this was something that staff used to be able to do, and now it goes to commission?
Correct.
Why?
So at the time, the commission wanted to be more in the conversation for these deviations and whether or not they were granted. The language is similar. Prior to the codification, staff could allow these deviations as long as staff determined that they met the intent of the downtown master plan. Language is similar now that it's codified, except it gives that responsibility to the commission.
So if this did, obviously, and when was that change initiated?
2022.
2022, so that was last year?
I believe so. Yeah, when we codify the plan, 2021, 2022.
So before that, staff would look at these deviations, and staff would decide based on whether you felt it meant the intent of the master plan?
Correct.
In your opinion, do these deviations meet the intent of the master plan?
Yeah, so there's two deviations. The street wall length and the master plan really speaks to that pedestrian and ground level experience and how the building frames the street. So if we were to look at meeting the intent for a deviation request, we'd look at things like building articulation and fenestration, architectural features, similar to the banding on this building, the ground floor retail and active uses, the drop-off location, the plaza space they provided, and kind of take all that into consideration to determine if we think that that ground-level pedestrian experience is the same, whether it was 300 feet or the 399 feet in this case.
So basically, you would be looking at what those active uses are, what those architectural features are, to break up that extra length that's being requested as a deviation?
Correct. And that's based on the pedestrian experience at the ground level along that building, along the public street as well.
And what is your estimation of whether that does do that in this case in terms of breaking up that extra length that's being required because of these active uses?
Yeah, so I mean, I think the addition of the plaza space at the corner, the restaurant or retail use at the corner of Federal and Second helped meet that intent. I think the architectural banding along the parking garage, the breaking up of the middle of the podium with the green wall all contribute to meeting that intent of the street wall requirement.
So let's go to the second deviation. And if you could explain that for me, because I understand what is being asked on the 10th floor for the amenity deck. So does that meet the intent of the master plan, or is that just clearly in violation?
So floor plate size is mainly how you look at these towers. So the taller the towers get, you know, the smaller floor plate leads to a more slender-looking tower. It's more about the bulk of the tower than anything. So again, I think what the applicant is suggesting is that, not necessarily the 10th floor, because that, I'll talk about that separately, but the towers themselves with some of the architectural features and the banding, that they've mitigated that bulk in a way that accommodates that additional 3,000-some-odd square feet of floor plate size per floor. The 10th floor itself is an amenity deck. It's kind of tucked underneath the towers. You know, I don't know if it's necessarily as noticeable as a component of the tower at that point because of the way it's situated, but that is a much larger request.
Much larger request?
In terms of the square footage for the deviation, because it's not necessarily, even though it's part of the tower, it's situated more like part of the top of the podium.
So let me ask you this question, and I, you mentioned the banding. Now, I've heard some discrepancies from both sides in my meetings with them about the tower separation request of 60 feet. Does staff believe that that has been met here in terms of that? Or how does that banding interact with that requirement of 60-feet separation between the towers?
Yeah, so we do, we weren't clear on that. So what we did was we asked our zoning administrator to make a determination on that, and that's typically what we'll do if there's an issue within the code that we need some clarity on. The zoning administrator is a person in the city that's able to make that determination, and then that's what we use moving forward to evaluate projects. And that determination was made that that architectural feature does not interfere with the tower separation requirement. That is a feature, and what the tower separation really speaks to is the building and structure itself and not that feature.
Okay, thank you for that. And then wouldn't that also apply then to the balconies also in terms of the increased floor plate? Do we include balconies?
We do.
Okay, so is that still, the deviation is still the same whether we include those balconies or not?
Yes, it looks like there's still a deviation need even if the balconies were not included.
Okay, thank you. So another few comments also that I want to have addressed because I understand the frustration of Mr. Wurzak when he talks about things like views and what you see, the view from the pool deck now versus what you will see from the pool deck later. Without that deviation for the floor plate, let's say that didn't happen or that wasn't granted, and would that in any way still open up that view on the pool deck of the Dalmar on the sixth floor? Or would it still be blocked regardless of the deviation?
So you'd still have three floors of parking podium above that sixth floor, thereabouts. I'm not sure the exact height in terms of feet of both, but you'd have approximately three floors of parking garage still in the view of the pool deck.
Pool deck. So in other words, even if we did not grant these deviations, that view would still be altered based on the new code for the downtown core?
Right.
There's nothing we can do about that?
Right.
And then I know that the developer proffered the idea of going back and making another condition, which I think is gonna be essential, no matter what happens here. That's gonna be essential to go back and figure something out that is going to be seen from that pool deck on the Dalmar, because I agree that that has to be improved. But my frustration is that even if this deviation is not approved, there's still gonna be blockage of the current view of that downtown regardless, correct?
Regardless. I mean, really what you're... Regardless. I mean, really what you're looking at in terms of if they came in and met all the conditions of the code is a reduced street wall by ninety-nine feet, a bit more slender tower, but the podium itself, you know, wouldn't change that drastically in terms of its proximity to the Dalmar.
Okay. I'm very, I'm very much sharing the concern in terms of the view corridors. But again, I have to read what our code says. Are view corridors protected by code?
No.
No. We can't even go there in terms of how we might share that frustration, because that's just not protected by code, regardless. Mayor, I, I think I have a few more questions, but I'm gonna have to go review because I have a lot of notes here. But for now, that, that helps me with a lot of these questions and concerns. Oh, by the way, I did want to mention, so, just talk to me a little bit about what's going to happen if this project moves forward. There's gonna, if I'm not mistaken, there's going to be nine million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars at the time of building permitting. That's going to go to the housing trust funds of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County, and it even split, so roughly four and a half, four point seven five million for the pot for affordable housing, because there will be no affordable housing provided in this project.
Correct. But they're making a contribution to the trust fund.
Yes, of nine million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, this, again, this is a tough one. I, I, I so well understand the frustration, and, you know, again, I, I don't want to see us getting into any kind of legal issue here. But this is just an unfortunate result of what we did when we changed the zoning for the downtown core and the intent of the master plan. Is there anything I'm missing here?
No, I think you're right on. I think, you know, this is what we're seeing is with that move to the north three blocks, it did open up the opportunity to create larger development in these areas that wasn't permitted before.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay. District One, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any comments?
So, I kind of struggle with this project too. So, you know, one of the first questions I asked when I met with the developer's team was the impact on the Dalmar. To the point of the earlier discussion, the Dalmar really was a pioneer in this area. They came in when it was fairly rundown, when it was problematic for crime and prostitution in that area, and they were willing to come and invest their money and, and turn that neighborhood around. And so, I was very concerned when I met with the developer's team about the impact this project is going to have on that hotel. It's become a real destination for folks coming to the city. So, I, I struggle with this one. I really do, and I, I, you know, I think I made that somewhat clear. Something is going to get built there. Our height allows the five hundred foot, and as I said to the team, apparently, that's become the de facto height of every building that we're going to build from now on is five hundred feet. I'm disappointed in that. I think it overwhelms our downtown, candidly, but that's where we are, so, not much we can do about that.
It wasn't, it is unlimited, actually. It's not five hundred.
It's the FAA, thankfully.
Yeah, but even those are becoming, they're getting waivers for that.
I know, and they're looking at Brickell right now. I think the tallest one in Brickell is eight hundred and ninety-eight feet.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's coming, folks. You're gonna have thousand-foot-tall buildings in downtown. We're, we're gonna look more and more like Miami, which is doing its best to look more and more like Manhattan, or Dubai for that matter. I know you like Dubai, Mayor, so I'll throw that one in there for you. I don't think that's a good thing. I, I think it's, I think it overwhelms the City of Fort Lauderdale. I'd love for us to come back and, and revisit that at some point, but I'm sure there's all kinds of legal issues that will challenge us, Burt Harris being at the root of that. So, I struggle with this one. I struggle with the larger floor plates because I know it does block some of the light and air to the project, and I know that's one of the things that we've talked about many times through the years when we've looked at these projects, is the impact that it has on the neighbors. So, again, I, I'm, I'm not entirely happy with the project, but I do believe that something is going to be built there. I, I don't think that there's much that we can do with this project unless the developer is willing to reduce the size of those floor plates to make it a little bit more acceptable to the Dalmar. But I don't think there's much else that we can do at this point to mitigate the impact that it's going to have on, on that project, so. Again, it's, it's, as, as Commissioner Glassman said, this is a tough call.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor? Do you have any comments?
I do. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for both of the presentations that were shared tonight. This is a, a hard call, as my colleagues have said. We have fortunes and master plans that are in place that has allowed for opportunities for buildings to come in our, to be built in our city at these heights, and giving comment and agreeing with what Herbst had said about the Dalmar coming in at a time where buildings were not necessarily, developers were not necessarily running to the area, recognizing that as well. I'm, I'm gonna stop right there.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Sturman?
Chris, if you, just a couple of quick questions. They said, the developer said, everything's compliant excepting one little thing, and they said the floor plate, it's an extra hundred feet. I mean, it's one little thing, but I, I think it's one thing. I wouldn't call that little. I mean, that, that's significant, so. And what's additional units that does that translate? Do they have more units in that, with that? Adding it, that extra hundred feet, do you know what that would translate into?
Yeah, I mean, presumably, there are more units. I mean, it could be any sort of space within those, in those towers, but presumably, it's units.
Number two is, and this is for a conversation at a different time, they do, it does require affordable housing. And this particular unit has decided to make payments in lieu of, well, a little over nine million, half to the city, half to the county, correct? So, now, I, this city attorney, we've discussed this, but once again, the option of payments in lieu of, that's to the developer, not with us. Is that correct? So, it's not like we could say we want the affordable housing units there. The developer has the option to make payments in lieu of, which might or might not be built in our city, which might or might not be coming to us, and clearly, the people that are going to be affected are not going to reap the benefits of the affordable housing. I think, I feel for the, for the Dalmar. I think that nine hundred, I mean, the hundred feet is not an insignificant thing, and I'm inclined to vote against this, to be honest with you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, I guess I'm the last to speak, and Jake, apparently, everybody feels bad for this situation, and I'm listening to the district commissioner, I'm listening to everybody. No matter what, something's going to be built there, and no matter what, the sixth floor amenities deck is going to be blocked, whether it be by a building, whether it be by a podium. I think the first time I ever stepped out onto that amenities deck and thought, wow, what a beautiful view it was, my next thought was, it's gonna, it's only going to be temporary, because that's the nature of Flagler Village. It's, the fact that you're the first on the block meant that, that the risk was there that someone would come in and build right next door to you. In your particular situation, you're going to have someone to the south of you and to the north of you, and and as I looked at your, your renderings, it clearly closes in on what had be, what still is a signature architectural piece in our, in our downtown. I've enjoyed many hours going to the, to your hotel, at the Terrace Grill, and the, and the, and the rooftop nightclub, Sparrow. It's just, it's just a wonderful addition to the, to what we have to offer here in Fort Lauderdale. So, I thought about this myself, and I'm thinking, well, what happens if we allowed no variances to this? What happens if we said no to the thirty-nine thousand foot floor plate on the tenth floor? We're still going to have nine floors of parking, which is allowed. Let's say we didn't allow the building to be the extra ninety-nine feet. We're still going to have two towers, and we're still going to have a massive project to the south of you. You know, the fact that they're adding money to the, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think, is, is laudable, and will continue to be able to provide affordable housing in some parts of the city by, by creating a fund for gap funding that other developers need in order to be able to proceed with their projects. But I don't, I don't know that if we, if we decided to turn down the variances, it's still going to be a building there, and that's the problem. So, I did speak with the developer, developer's representative, rather, prior to this meeting, asking that the area between the, the sixth and the, and the tenth floor, or the ninth floor, that I think is part of the amended request, that there be some sort of architectural lighting or landscaping treatment that the, the, your amenities deck will face, so that they will not be looking at a, at the bold face of a parking garage, the open, the open areas of, of fluorescent lights and the headlights of vehicles. They have agreed to that, and, and so, at least we're trying to mitigate the impact that, that this building is going to have. So, I asked the, the commission going forward, I know this doesn't help Mr. Wurzak, but I asked the commission going forward that perhaps we need to revisit some of these master plan design ideas and, and understand that when trying to, trying to, you know, bring further development into this area, that we need to be more respectful of, of the investment that's already there, and, and not just say, well, tough luck, you know, you got there first, but we got there second, and we, we have different design criteria that we, we can abide by. So, I'm going to support the, the application, but with the amended, with the amendment, I would like a certain dollar figure maybe attached to this, a minimum dollar figure attached to this, so it isn't just, you know, slapped together. I know your client is here. You want to talk to, to your client? And just see if we can put a minimum dollar figure on this, because I just don't want to see something, you know, rudimentary when in fact Mr. Wurzak has spent tens of millions of dollars developing this product, this project that, that he's been very successful in maintaining, especially during COVID. I mean, the, the, Mr. Wurzak has been able to sustain himself during a time when the hospitality business was, was tanking. So, you know, we're very proud of his efforts, his community efforts and all of that. But I think to some extent, our hands are tied because of the development changes. So, do you have any thoughts on, on the amendment?
Uh, Mayor, we're very happy to commit to that amendment, and we're very happy to do that, and we, we drafted it so that it has to be before final DRC, and you know you need final DRC to, to start your construction. And of course, we'll address any concerns during construction as well. I could not begin to venture a guess of what some of that might look like. What I might offer is that ownership will meet with Mr. Wurzak again and look at something together so that he has an opportunity to participate in that discussion. Otherwise, I would just be pulling a number out of thin air, and I, I'm not an architect. I, we do have some architects here, but even they have to go out for pricing, so. Unless you have an idea, I, I would just be...
Well, don't use the lighting company that we use, unless...
Exactly. Exactly.
Please.
Mr. Wurzak, did you want to add to this?
Sure. So, I spoke with the developer nine months ago, and I told them about the
Impact?
Impact on the Dalmar, and specifically to the podium and the design. And they had nine months to come up with a design. They had nine months to call me and reach out. They had nine months to propose these things.
Well, it's now going to be, it's going to be a requirement now.
It's going to be a requirement, but the other thing is the upper floor plates that allow them to build an extra two hundred units based on our calculations.
Right.
That does block our view corridor. So, you asked the question, Mayor, and I was thinking to myself, what could you do? Sure, we can't get rid of the podium, but if the towers were compliant with the zone, zoning, and more narrow, they could still build their building, yet I would have more light, more sun, and more views. I don't see a reason that's been presented here tonight that shows a hardship, other than the fact that they want to build more units. And there are units fronting US One. So, the fact that they're extending their podium a hundred feet allows them to build units on US One, because it, it fits them in. So, one solution certainly, and I'm grateful if the developer is going to, after nine months of consideration, enhance the parking garage that faces the Dalmar, but the towers also exceed the zoning requirement, and I don't see a hardship that they're facing. And I see a hardship that we're facing, because while the podium and the pool deck are going to be at odds with each other, we have guest rooms on floors seven through twenty-four, which also have views, and we want to minimize that impact as much as possible.
So, Chris, Chris Cooper, Mr. Cooper, can you come to the podium? Is the standard of, under which we are reviewing this request to be based on a hardship?
No, it's not a variance. It's, it's based on intent. If you think the design meets the intent, that's what, that's what you...
The intent of what?
The, the master plan. So, that would be what you base your decision on.
All right, so it's not really a variance?
No.
It's a deviation.
It's not a hardship request.
And if I might, i- if you do look at our code, there is a section that says downtown master plan deviation, and it reads, "In accordance with ULDR Section forty-seven dash thirteen, twenty J three, in the event the developer of a parcel of land in the downtown Rack District desires to deviate from the requirements of Section forty-seven dash thirteen, dot point two zero B, downtown master plan standards, the developer may submit the design of the proposed development for review and determination by the city commission if the alternative design meets the overall intent of the downtown master plan. The applicant is requesting alternative site design solutions for maximum building length and maximum floor plate size requirements described in more detail as follows." And then it gets into all of those very specifics. So, Chris, I, I ask you, if this did really conform to the three hundred feet, I know, I know Commissioner Sturman kept saying a hundred feet floor plate, but a hundred feet is the strength length, not the floor plate.
No, no, a hundred. Hundred feet more.
Yeah.
No, but that's the street length, not, right. It has nothing to do with the floor plate, I'm just correcting that.
It's the portion of the building along the public right-of-way of the street.
Along Second Street, on the south side of the building?
Correct.
Correct. So, let me ask you a question. If it did pull back to three hundred, what would that do to the towers? What would that, would they be squatter? Would they be less slender? Would they be, what would happen to those towers?
It depends on where they sit on top of that. If they could, if they could fit within the three hundred feet and maintain the distance separation, I'm, I'd have to look at the plan to see where that extra fifty feet, or extra hundred feet comes in.
Is that, is, is that extra feet probably because this is such a, it's a strange shape. It's an L shape, but it's very slender and long along the south side of the project. So, I'm assuming that that's the reason that the request is in for the deviation of the extra ninety-nine feet, because if you pulled back to the three hundred, I don't know, would it look strange on the site as opposed to what we're looking at today?
I mean, it would leave space. I don't, I don't know exactly the reason why, other than they made the design to, to, to meet the intent, but I don't know the reason why they, they need it. If it's parking circulation, if it's drive aisles, you know, what the case may be in terms of why that's longer than it is. It is, it is a very long site. It's very narrow along Federal, and then it's very deep on the second.
Comes back in an L. It's very strange.
Right, right.
So, I, I understand how it's being designed to meet that site. One more question, because I know that we heard, you know, a little bit of frustration, consternation over the garage, over the podium height and all of that, but I, I do want to get to the question of whether it's a mechanical ventilation or a natural ventilation. What, what does staff prefer?
Well, I think you heard some reasons why natural ventilation could be better than mechanical. Like, you know, mechanical does, it's, it could be noisier. There, there could be more directed exhaust fumes. It's, it's not as free-flowing, so, you know, I think natural ventilation makes sense if you can make it work. You know, there's requirements about a certain amount of opening in the garage to make it work, so it can't always work, but I think when it can work, it makes sense.
So, the way it's presented to us now, the new project is natural, Dalmar is mechanical?
Correct.
So, I mean, if we, if we did other things, we would then have this, like, dueling mechanical garages facing each other, and what would that do to the noise level?
Yeah, potentially, because if you, if you do shorten the garage or make the garage smaller, you, you do run out of that surface area to provide those, those natural ventilation spaces that's required by code, so it could potentially make them go in a different direction. You know, it's something we have to look at, but I, I couldn't tell you for sure, but it's, it's a potential.
Well, it's a potential problem, I think, because you have then two garages facing each other ten feet away. And by the way, and I know that that sounds like such a small number of feet separation, but code permits that, correct?
It does.
It does. I know that, I, I, these are frustrations that, you know, we have, but it's what our code is saying.
Yeah, building, building code really dictates the separation of buildings in downtown, so there's adequate space based on the type of building, the opening of the buildings, whether it's fire suppression... whether it's fire suppression or not, you know, there's a lot of things that go into it, but it's more so building code that creates that separation than the, than the plan itself, the master plan itself.
So it would be better, though, to have just natural ventilation on this new project opposite the mechanical versus mechanical versus mechanical, which would be very noisy and very difficult.
You, you would likely have a noise issue with that in some direction, whether it's towards Dalmar or another direction, but mechanical does, you know, generate that noise issue.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So to answer your question, I'm looking at one of the exhibits here, and it seems that the, the developer has pushed back the podium away from Federal Highway in order to have a, a wider promenade, is that correct? Right. And so he would be entitled to stretch that out if you're, in other words, if, if we're looking to reduce the size of the podium by 99 feet, he, I don't know whether, on the, on the west side, it looks like it doesn't really quite come to the very end of the podium, the tower doesn't. So you could shave off some, something there, but I'm not sure how that's going to impact the proximity to the building to the west. In other words, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see if there's some way we can open up the space a little bit more. Commissioner Herbst, do you?
Yeah, actually, so-
What do you think?
If you were to pivot the buildings on the podium, it would create a completely different view corridor.
I don't know if they have the real estates to kind of a narrow site. In other words, if you look at it, it's just a very narrow site, so if you twist it, I know what you're saying, but I don't think they can, it would overhang the podium, which would be an interesting architectural feature.
It would. It would be, it would be, it would be iconic, and some of the favorite words we hear around here.
We don't want to look too much like Dubai, so.
Well, you know, so the two things I struggle with, again, if it was possible to, to, to angle those somewhat, I think that would make a huge difference. The, the other issue, though, I do have is with that, that 10-foot spacing between the building. As Commissioner Glassman says, well, that's what the code allows.
Between the podiums, yeah.
Right, between the podiums. As Commissioner Glassman says, that's what code allows, but we've already decided that we're deviating from the code. So if they could open that space up and put more width in there, I wonder if that would-
That doesn't change the fact that- It doesn't change the fact that if you added 10 more feet, it's still blocking it.
It's still, but there's, I think there's a difference between having a wall right in your face and a wall further away, too. You know, the proximity of the wall is going to have a significant visual impact on anybody that's on that pool deck. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to resolve this. One of the things I'm a little disappointed that, and I will share this with the developer, is this nine-month gap between when you first met with, with the Dalmar and where we are today. I would like to make sure that when projects are going up, that there's a lot more communication with the impacted neighbors. I, I think that's very important, particularly if you're coming and seeking any kind of deviation from the code. I mean, I think it's critical that we have more communication, more of an effort to reach a, you know, satisfactory collaborative solution than, than what I think I'm seeing here today. I'm a little disappointed with that.
Well, actually, they, I think they had voluntarily, even though it was not required, a public participation meeting for the whole neighborhood on this project, and that's not required in this case.
But, but, so, but if I, if I understood from Jake, they've met with him once, and, and there hasn't been conversation and ongoing dialogue with relation- This is the most impacted project. So if, if I understood Jake correctly, they met with him once, nine months ago, and there has not been an ongoing dialogue. And so just confirm that for me, if you will, because I want to make, I want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding what's being communicated, so.
Thank you. Push the button.
I met with the group on February 9th, 2023, at 10:00 AM. Gary Cohen from their team was the lead representative, and they had other architects on the phone, and we expressed these issues. And we got a little letter in the mail about two, three weeks ago for a Zoom invite. We were one of two people on the Zoom invite, re-expressed those issues. Were asked to get off the Zoom invite and have a private conversation with the developers lobbyist. We re-expressed those issues again, and we brought up, we, we keep talking about the podium length, the podium length is fine, but it's, the towers are also exceeding the floor plane as well. But to answer your question, Commissioner, February 9th, and haven't heard anything since.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Commissioner, we held a voluntary public participation meeting about a month ago, and we sent the invite to the Dalmar and to all the neighboring associations. The Dalmar was the only group that showed up, nobody else came to the public participation. Because it was a, an open Zoom, and it was just us and Dalmar talking, we invited Dalmar to reach out to us directly, gave him my cellphone, and I said, I said, since it's just us, since it's, it's 20 of our consultants, the Dalmar and me, why don't you just call me, here's my cellphone number, and we'd be happy to meet with you, and I never heard from them, that was less than a month ago.
Right, but I think it's that timeframe between February and last month that's kind of the concern. You know, you know, we, we started back when Lee Feldman was here, calling everybody, you know, not residents, not citizens, we now call them neighbors, all right? So this has become the city's new motto. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. And, and we're community builders. Personally, I never adopted any of that myself, but that's okay, that's just my personality. But the neighborly thing to do would have been to have a more active, ongoing dialogue with the Dalmar during the course of the design of this project. I think if we had had that happen, we may not, may not, try to be optimistic here. We may not be right where we are today if it was partnership and collaboration. I don't feel that we've had partnership and collaboration with the most impacted property. So I, I think, I think some of this could have been avoided if, if, if there was more outreach earlier on in the process.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, we did actually, because ownership was speaking directly to the Dalmar at, at the dates, I don't know what all the dates were, because I was not involved in those meetings, but when the project was originally submitted, it had an application for a valley, excuse me, an alley right, a right-of-way vacation that Dalmar objected to, so we withdrew that. It also had a large number of waiver requests on the Dalmar side that were removed as well. The project was redesigned at, at the request of the Dalmar, and we also added architectural banding on the backside of the garage, which was also one of the Dalmars. I, I respect what you're saying, and you're right, that probably should have been better communicated, but there were a large number of changes that were made.
Some of which I requested also. Let me ask you a question, Stephanie? With your client here, too. I'm looking at the image from the, from the south, and if the, if the west tower was moved over to be plumb with the edge of the, with, plumb with the edge of the podium to the west, which would open this distance between the two buildings from 60 feet to probably 75 or so feet, is that, is that structurally capable of happening?
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to ask Ray Fort with Architect Tonica to respond to that.
See what I'm saying?
While, while it would be possible, we have another building to the west side, and we would no longer be in compliance with the 60-foot separation.
So that would, that would, we would be too close to that building?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the Commission? There being none, someone like to make a motion? Well, is it a motion or a resolution? Hold on, it's a resolution. Someone like to introduce a resolution, either approving or disapproving the item?
I'll make a, I'll introduce the resolution approving the site plan, development permit and design deviation request.
As amended?
Oh, definitely as amended, and Chris, will this also include all 13 staff conditions that were in the backup? All of that. And then, in addition, what we discussed this evening with regards to the screening and the additional design? Okay, thank you.
Okay, resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
Could I get clarification on one thing before we do that?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Mayor, so the developer is going to meet with the Dalmar?
To discuss the architectural changes along the west side.
To discuss that, but is there anything in there that has any teeth to it? So they could discuss it, but then not come to a conclusion, so?
Well, they've agreed to add architectural landscaping and lighting design to that section that faces the, the Dalmar's amenities deck.
Agreed, but should it be acceptable to the Dalmar? Can we, can we factor that into what we're talking about here? Because it's one thing to talk, it's another thing to actually agree. So we, we can, we can talk-
You want to make more, bring more definition to it?
I, I think we need to, yeah, because I, I think if we're going to condition this upon having a conversation with the Dalmar, if we're going to, again, do a deviation from the code that's going to have a negative impact on the Dalmar, then I think it's important that they not only have an opportunity to speak, because they've done that already without any effect, I, I think they need to have an opportunity to agree or not agree, and so I, I, I want to figure out how we wrap that up in this.
Well, what happens if they don't agree?
That's my question. Hence, hence the reason for my asking.
Do you have any thoughts? Push the button, please.
To leave it just in Dalmar's hands, you'd be abdicating your role as commissioners to make these decisions. Tonight, we're requesting these deviations, and we've committed to meeting with them and, and, and trying to work out a solution. Now, there are other times that we will be back before here, and I'm sure they'll contact you, but for us to, to just be subject to their approval only would be abdicating your role as a commissioner.
Mr. City Attorney, do you agree with that?
What I think I would recommend is that they, they try to meet, come to an agreement. If it fails, they bring that component back to you to solve.
Okay, I like that.
I like that, too. And Senator, you, you've heard our concerns this evening.
Yes, definitely.
So, and, and let's, let's not make this wait until final DRC comments, okay? Let's, let's really get on this as soon as possible, so that-
Okay.
We can have, you know, a solution that's amenable for all parties. I, I just don't want this to wait till it goes through that whole process.
We've heard you loud and clear this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So we're as amended, as amended?
As amended, pursuant to the recommendation of City Attorney. Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the issuance of a site plan Level 2 development permit for an alternative design that meets the overall intent of the downtown master plan for the development of a 47-story, two-tower, 936-unit mixed-use residential and commercial development located at 201 North Federal Highway, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Downtown Regional Activity Center City Center Zoning District. Commissioner Herbst?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman? Commissioner Sternman?
I do not think this meets intent, I cannot support this, my vote is no.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes. Okay, so that resolution's approved, and we'll wait to hear back from Mr. Wurzak and the developer to see if they've come to an agreement as to the feasibility of the, of the, I guess, the rendering or the architectural improvements that are going to be made to the north side of the parking podium that impact the, that, that impact the amenities deck of the Dalmar Hotel. Okay. OSR, OFR-1, First Reading Ordinance Amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Article 9, Administration and Boards to Revise Terms of Appointment on the Planning and Zoning Board and Historic Preservation Board. This is a public hearing, so I will entertain any, anyone who wishes to comment or speak. We have, no one has signed up to speak on this. So, okay, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced.
Commissioners. If I may, Duane Spence, Deputy City Attorney, attached-
Did you sign up to speak?
No. I did not, sir. In between the approval of the Planning and Zoning Board and our preparing of the ordinance for your review, we did note that there are a few changes that we would recommend that would enable the ordinance to more appropriately reflect the direction that the Commission had brought us. So the, the ordinance as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board only changed the years from three to four. There's a second ordinance attached to your backup that addresses changing the beginning of the term from June to December to align with the, the Commission Terms of Office, and also the time period for appointing the Chair of the respective boards at, at that time as well. And there is additional consideration that we'd like direction with regards to making amendments to the ordinance for second reading with regards to the Terms of Office for the existing appointees to those boards. Those individuals are scheduled, some of those individuals are scheduled to end their terms on May 31st of 2024. There are others that will end their term in 2025 and 2026.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So, Mayor, thank you. I was the one who asked that we bring this forward, because I think it was important that we align, you know, the, these quasi-judicial boards with, with our Commission terms, because I think it's important. And I had also indicated, when I saw this first draft to City Attorney's Office, that I think my intent was always that we're extending the terms of the existing folks that are on there, we're not shortening it. For example, I don't want somebody who was appointed as chairman in May to be out of their seat in December, that was not the goal. The goal was to extend, not to shorten, so I asked them to make, make that known so we could make these corrections when we get to the, the next reading. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Duane. Okay, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, Article 9, Administration Board Specifically 47-30, Planning and Zoning Board in Section 47-32, Historic Preservation Board, to revise term of appointment on each board, providing for correction of script or errors, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and OFR-1 is approved on first reading. OFR-2, this is the first reading, an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Flood Plane Management. Anyone have any questions? No one, no one has signed up to speak. If there are no questions, please call the roll. Someone introduce the ordinance.
Introduced.
Now call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter 14, Flood Plane Management of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by adopting new flood plane management regulations, revising existing flood plane management regulations, providing for applicability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification, severability, and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and OFR-2 is approved on first reading. We now come to OSR-1. This is a second reading of an ordinance establishing the Bahia Mar Community Development District and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary and instrumental, incidental instruments. We have a couple of people sign up to speak.
This is a public hearing, too, Mayor.
And this is a public hearing, so we're asking people to speak. All right? So two people have signed up to speak, one, Ginger, well, just for questions, where is Ginger?
Right there.
Okay, this is for questions, and Chris Nelson. Chris, you still here?
Just for questions.
Just for questions?
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Okay. All right, so move to close public hearing, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
There's a second, move to seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and OSR-1 is now approved on second reading. Now we move to-
Mayor, that was the closed public hearing.
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry. I'm eager to get to R4. Yes. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, establishing and naming the Bahia Mar Community Development District, making certain findings regarding the district describing the external boundaries of the district, naming the five persons designated to be the official members of the Board of Supervisors, providing consent for the exercise of certain powers, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Wait, 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 don't we have discussion about this? Are we voting on the ordinance, or are we discussing it?
We're voting on the ordinance, would you like-[1797.11] Would you like?
Oh, oh, my goodness, please. Seriously, okay, I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I have Mr. Tate or the attorney or our attorney?
Ginger Wald is here, she's your attorney.
Okay, I'm gonna start with our attorneys, and I have some big concerns about this, some major concerns. I'll start with, and we spoke about this, Mr. Attorney. First of all, let's talk about the financial risk of this. I mean, this is, explain to the audience what this is, what the CDD is, what we're doing, what is happening with the infrastructure, who's responsible, the taxing authority and elected officials, and just give a summary for everybody who might not understand, if you could.
Well, the summary is that this is a legal entity, sort of a governmental entity, independent, authorized by state law, that will allow, once created, to operate within its jurisdiction, which is in the Bahia Mar podium area, essentially. There'll be people elected, first there'll be people appointed, probably starting tonight, and then within 90 days, people will be elected to be on that committee board, and they will be able to do bonding, do their own financing. It won't be city financing. It will be them getting money from the people who are involved in it, and possibly the people to whom they sell in the future, that they will raise their own money for those things.
Okay, once the CDD is formed, is the city at risk financially for this?
It's my opinion that it's not.
Does this increase or decrease the city's risk, or has no effect one way or the other?
It's the last one. I don't see it as about any.
A decrease, okay. The developers are ready on the hook for the infrastructure anyway. Why would, explain, what's the advantage of having a CDD from our point of view?
I'd have to ask Ms. Wald to help you out with that.
Okay, go ahead, please, please explain.
Good evening, Ginger Wald, Belling, Cochran, Lyles, Moore, and Ramsey. I had dental surgery, so if you seen me drooling or having to take some water, you'll understand why.
You're not swooning in front of the commissioner?
I am not swooning in front of the commissioners.
I'm gonna use that excuse someday.
I'll show you the stitches.
I'm gonna give that one. If you want to see them. If you see me drooling, it's dental work.
So to answer some of your questions.
Sure.
In regards to a community development district. It's a taxing district. It's for financing.
Self taxing, yeah.
It is self taxing. It is not as the taxing and the debt and the operation and the maintenance of a community development district is only as to the community development district, those costs. It's not outside of the community development district, it's not for all the residents of the City of Fort Lauderdale. So as to the financing aspect of it, and at risk in regards to the City of Fort Lauderdale as their residents, there's none. It's not a responsibility of the City of Fort Lauderdale. It's not a dependent district of the City of Fort Lauderdale. It is an independent special purpose government, and it has to act like a government, just as you do as the City of Fort Lauderdale, specifically with that. It's open to public records, it has all those requirements.
Sunshine and everything?
All sunshine law, ethics requirements for each one of the board members, those supervisors. There's requirements for those supervisors, no matter how they are appointed or elected, they have to be 18 years older, they have to be a resident of the state, and they also have to be.
We'll get to that in a minute. No, no, we'll get to that in a minute.
And they also have to be a U.S. citizen, to answer some of those questions in regards to that regard.
You might not know this, but I was opposed to this project. I'm not thrilled about this project for a few reasons, the height, parking, and things like that. Does passing a CDD in any way lock this in more?
No.
Not, or is it simply a financial tool as unrelated to this?
No, it's unrelated totally. A CDD has absolutely no powers related to what you have as a city commission, which is zoning, or what you just had today, any type of deviations, any type of variances. CDDs have no power over that. The powers that the CDD has are very limited, in fact, they're specifically granted from 190, and you're the ones that are actually going to be as part of the ordinance, not just creating the CDD, but proceeding with that as to the charter of the CDD and those powers, including that within Chapter 190. There's nothing outside of that the CDD can do.
Let's talk default. And either attorney, if the developer, if the CDD defaults, is the city at risk?
No. First of all, the CDD doesn't, when you say default, and we'll maybe talk about other cities, the city's not able to go ahead and specifically take care of its financial matters. And this has happened to other cities in the past, many years ago, when there were issues. Those cities can go, and they can ask the state for assistance. A CDD can do the same.
So this does not fall onto the city? If the CDD has an issue, there's no scenario that it falls onto the city?
No, it's not a fall onto the city. The city creates the CDD, and when there is no longer a purpose for the CDD, bonds are paid off, or whoever lives there no longer wants to have the CDD after all debt is gone, and the CDD divests itself of any ownership of public infrastructure, then the CDD can dissolve. The CDD comes back to the City of Fort Lauderdale for that to happen. That's the involvement of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale for the creation of the CDD.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question for you. The original, two weeks ago or a month ago when this first came through, there was a package in there, and including the CDD, it did mention air rights. I had asked that they be separated, and this CDD, what, this item here, the ordinance, it does not grant or imply air rights whatsoever, correct?
That is going to be the next item?
I know, but voting on this has no effect.
For the CDD, no, it does not give for.
Okay, so if I have issues with air rights, voting on this is unrelated?
That is correct.
Okay, I could, I would like the developer to come up forward if we can. Mr. Tate, if you want to introduce yourself?
Jimmy Tate, developer with the Rock family and Related, who are both here as well.
Okay, I'm gonna have you, speak to you in a second, I hope you don't mind, but before I do, I'm gonna set it up. We apparently do not pick the five, the five initial supervisors, and I was looking through here, and it's apparently, the way it's written here, it's been picked for us, and we had discussed this before, that as the landowner, that we would normally pick it, and I was, and you had corrected me, it doesn't work that way. Who chooses the first five supervisors?
What Mr. Tate has done, and Ginger's, that they proposed five people whose names are listed in the petition, those are the proposed to be the first five people who will be interim, in fact, supervisors, until the election takes place within 90 days, which is the way it's planned, so.
So here's my question.
And I think I also want to point out, I did tell you that you're not precluded from appointing those interim supervisors if you wish to.
Okay, a couple of things. The landowner appoints them, but there was a question about, according to this, who, as the way the state statute reads, typically, who is the one that appoints the first five electors?
Well, again, the petitioner has proposed there are five people.
And that's the standard way that this goes?
That's correct.
Okay, other CDDs that you've had, I mean, we've had no experience, how does that work with other cities?
I've only dealt with one way many years ago called Turtle Run in Coral Springs, it's a single-family homeowners development, and those people are homeowners, five people were chosen to operate it, then they elected the homeowners to run it, and about 30 years later, it still operates.
And it wasn't the city?
It is not the city.
I, if I could, no, thank you, I was gonna have, Mr. Tate, you look different all of a sudden. No, 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 I wanted to speak to you, no, please, no, no, that was a little joke, very little joke. Both of you had said something that concerns me, and my biggest thing is risk. We're gonna take, we're taking on risk, and you're telling me we are not. One comment was made that if we as a city pick the first five board members, we actually have the potential of piercing our shield, because if something does go sour, they could maybe come after the city one way or the other. Is it good or bad for us to pick the electors?
To me, there's no such thing as, you're talking about what lawyers call piercing the corporate veil. That does not obtain in this kind of a case. Again, these people are appointed as the interim for the 90 days. What they do is not going to fall back on the city, so the city has no liability for what they do, whether they act or omit to act to do something.
So us picking or don't picking the electors, it's not, it doesn't?
I don't think it gives you any value, but, you know.
Okay. Mr. Tate, I had a question for you. Yes, please, go ahead.
Can I just help you out a little bit?
Oh, please.
As your astute city attorney stated, he only dealt with Turtle Run, who we actually represent, our firm.
Okay.
And they've been in existence for 40-some-odd years now, so they actually surpass their life or their bonds and continue in existence. My firm represents almost all of the CDDs in Broward County, and many CDDs throughout the state. The common practice, and I had advised Mr. Hansbrough of this as well, the common practice is that the developer, the petitioner, which you have here, is the one, and that's why it's required to be listed within the petition, that's prepared and sent to you. It is part of the intent that they name the first five supervisors, which is what we have here. The reasoning behind it, and the intent behind it, is this. The process and the way that it works, those initial five supervisors, and a part of the developer, is also the developer is the one that's originally financing the CDD, because the CDD has no money. So what happens is the CDD enters into what's called a developer funding agreement, where the developer agrees to fund the CDD, to fund all the operation and the maintenance, any improvements that are going to be completed, that debt has not been issued yet. That's one of the reasons for it. There is a practical standpoint from that, from the beginning, before you get to the landowner's election, we'll explain a little bit of that as well. And it's also dealing with, they're the ones that have the skin in the game, the developer is the one with the skin in the game because they're the one putting the money out, and they're also the one that don't come before the CDD, but have already come before you, the city, with the development, and to make sure that there is a success of the development within the confines and the requirements that the CDD has as a government. The assessments, when they go forward with the levy, then usually go on the landowner. Now, landowner is actually defined, we talked about it last time, in the statute, it's not in your instance, what most people think and what you deal with residential, where the landowner is the property owner, in this case, we don't have that, we have the leasehold. So it's a little different, but it's the developer who also, in this instance, is the leasehold owner that is going to be responsible for those assessments.
So the leasehold holder is typically the one who picks the five?
Yes, because in this instance, we're dealing with a leasehold as opposed to dealing with a property owner. Most of the CDDs you'll see, you're dealing with the, and there's others with leasehold, but most of the CDDs you'll see, you're dealing with the property owner also being the developer, and they're the ones that are initially going ahead and naming the first five supervisors, board members, they're interchangeable terms. And so that's why you see that as well. But that's why the petition and the requirements under Chapter 190 state they have to include those first five people, because that is giving the developer that comfort level that these are the individuals that we're choosing initially, so we can make sure that the project is proceeding as to the public portion accordingly. Because as you said before, the developer has responsibilities already as a developer pursuant to the developer agreement. So this instance is basically the same, part of the public improvements from that development agreement are being shifted onto the CDD. Why? To get the financing, that municipal tax fee bond financing. It's a financing tool. It is not necessarily a tool specifically dealing with other things. It's not. That's the purpose.
Again, no rest of the city?
No.
Okay. Can I ask the developer to come up just for a moment? Thank you for joining us. I feel this is musical chairs, sit up, sit down, sit up, sit down, but actually, I'm going to ask you a question. We had spoken a while ago, I have a concern, a big concern here, and this really bothers me, and we looked at the five members, and I had spoken to you about this a while ago, and I said, listen, we need at least one or two people live in Fort Lauderdale, and since then, I've looked at the members on that board, and it looks like not a single one lives in our city.
That's true.
I was hoping that you could comment on that.
So after meeting with you and others, I heard the loud and clear, and we do have two people that are actually live in Fort Lauderdale. One actually lives in your district, Commissioner, and one lives in Commissioner Herbst's district.
That are residents here?
That are residents, full-time residents.
The address is, there's a, the address of?
I don't know, I'm off the top of my head.
Oh, no, 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 it's a Miami address, because that's a business.
No, the reason being is because until they are formally elected, right, they may, they have the right to say no. Right now, we asked them to say yes, they said yes. So until they're elected, and this is all public right now, and there's a chance that they say no, we have to then come back and pick someone else, but they're all said they're going to say yes. So the reason it's done this way is twofold. One, we want the corporate office to be able to get all the, almost like a registered agent, it acts as a tool so we can control, because keep in mind, at the end of the day, this is nothing more than a qualified funding agency and a collection agency. That's it. Everybody could try to call it something else, but that's really the core of what a CDD is. And the reason it's a funding agency better than us going to get conventional financing is because our debt will probably be two and a half basis points less, meaning at seven and a half percent for conventional versus 5% for CDD debt, that's a lot of money on a $40 million loan. And number one. Number two, it also affords us, which is good for the city, to develop all of the public infrastructure and infrastructure of the property that everybody was so worried about taking 10 years, now it's all going to be done in Phase 1. So you're gonna have the parks done, the promenade done, the infrastructure done, all while we do Phase 1. So there's a lot of ancillary benefits to the CDD, but don't let people confuse you what a CDD is. Plain and simple, it's a qualified funding agency and collection agency, that's it. And it's actually better than a master association, which we're obligated to do based upon the master declaration that we agreed to with the city. So the master association does the same, has the same responsibilities, but it doesn't have the same type of ability to get debt at such an inexpensive price, nor does it have the same type of collection capabilities, because it's not a special taxing district. The CDD is a special taxing district.
So let me get this straight, since we spoke, since we originally spoke?
Yes, we have two people.
You added, you put two people that are residents of Fort Lauderdale on there?
Two people are in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, I know you don't like me to say this, Commissioner Glassman, but each one of us has our strengths and weaknesses, if they were talking about cardiology or engineering is one thing, but I will like to hear what Mr. Herbst has to say, because he has, he's the finance guy. I have some reservations here, but I do want to defer to Mr. Herbst and what his thoughts are before we vote.
I don't know why you mentioned, I have no problem with that.
No, sometimes I say, what does Mr. Herbst say? He said, I keep asking about him.
I don't say that.
But this is something that I.
I have a specific question.
No, John, what's your take on this? I'd like to hear your take.
So CDDs, as Mr. Tate said, CDDs are simply a financing mechanism, right? It's a governmental entity, it has the ability to issue tax exempt debt, which provides for substantial savings. It also, so back in 2007, 2009, we saw a number of CDDs default on their debt, and the reason for that is we had developers that are in large projects that were doing, say, 1,000 homes, a lot of this is done in single-family home projects, that had not sold their houses during that period of the crash in real estate. And so the developer is still responsible for making all the payments on the bonds in that initial period until all the units are sold. When they weren't selling under the lots, they didn't have the cash flow to be able to sustain the payments on the debt. You're not in a circumstance like that, that was, obviously, we all recognize that that was, you know, basically a once-in-our-lifetime, hopefully, scenario. I don't think you're gonna see anything like that in this particular instance. The important thing for me is, and the city attorney addressed it, is that there is no residual liability that comes back to the city. I did have some concerns about if the city designated somebody on the board, that that could be problematic. I know the city attorney just said if we have somebody on there during that temporary period of time, it wouldn't be problematic, but I think if we were to require a permanent city representative on that board, I think that could be problematic, and I want to avoid that. So I don't have a problem, I'm not troubled by the fact that the sponsor, the petitioner, is the one that's picking the board, that's the way it's always done. It's a fairly straightforward and typical transaction. I think what this does really is it provides the funding mechanism to get all those public amenities done a lot faster, and I think that's critical. I think part of the success of this project is going to be getting the promenade done, you know, getting the seawalls done, all those things that we as a city are looking those things that we, as a city, are looking for the developer to provide. This gives a mechanism for him to do it, you know, faster and cheaper. And I think that's important for the success of the project, having those amenities in there first. Actually, I think will then help make the rest of the project more successful, because people come, they look, and they see what they're getting for their money. I think it'll get people excited about the future construction of the buildings. And then as those buildings are built, as those units are sold, this will eventually be turned over to the residents. So there's a threshold, and I forget what the number is, a couple of hundred units that have to be done. And at that point, the petitioner's representatives will be taken out, and the residents will then become the board of the CDD. And as Ginger explained, it is a governmental entity. They are subject to all the same rules for Sunshine that we are. So I'm not concerned with the establishment of the CDD. I don't think it entails any additional risk to the city whatsoever. I think, in fact, it's more likely that the features that we are interested in will get built and will be maintained. Because one of the things that happens with this is it becomes that obligation of the purchasers when, you know, when they acquire their units. So I think in the long run, this is probably a beneficial way of getting some of these public amenities done.
Do you have any further questions, Commissioner?
Oh, no, no, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission?
I just wanted to make one point. I agree with what Commissioner Herbst just said, and especially what I'm looking forward to is getting that park finished a lot sooner than later, which is a very important piece of this that we've added, is a dedicated park space. So Ginger, just to allay any fears in terms of process for the supervisors, isn't this very similar to when a developer builds, let's say, a condominium building, and before the residents reach a certain percentage of threshold, before what's known as turnover, the developer has his or her appointees as the board of directors for the condominium, and then once the residents take over, they then are able to elect their own board of directors? Isn't it very similar?
It's similar. It's similar. You know, the difference specifically is that this is a governmental entity, so.
Right. But in terms of that process?
It's the same process.
Exactly.
But it's more disclosure, because it is in the public, and the public is entitled to attend every single meeting and see what's going on and read every agenda. That's really the difference, is the transparency.
Right. Well, for a condominium building, though, the members, even before they do turnover, they are able to do all of those things as well. I'm just, it's a much smaller scale, it's a much different thing, but it's very similar in terms of process. Who gets to appoint that initial board? It's the developer.
Correct.
And then, once the owners are in place, they do turnover and they take over.
That is correct.
Commissioner Glassman mentioned something, I just wanted to double check. You know, the obligation for the park and public spaces, if we have a CDD, will that expedite the completion of the park?
It can, because once the CDD goes ahead, if everything happens as we're moving forward, once the CDD has the funding, then it can be constructed, because it needs to be spaced.
Yes. And Commissioner Sturman, I would just ask you to take a look at Page 1 of 2 of the CAM where it explains all of those, including the park. It includes all of the pieces that we're going to look to see happen sooner rather than later, including parking, the garage, park, promenade, roadway improvements, bridge improvements, lighting improvements, stormwater management system, water distribution, sanitary sewer improvements, public recreation of off-site improvements, and on and on and on. And that's all spelled out in the CAM.
Okay. Ginger, before you move, so just to, just to continue with the train of thought, so if there, since it has borrowing capacity, and if there is a default on the loan, is there a lien against these improvements or anything that, is that what a lender could expect from the entity?
Yes. What happens is the, it's similar as to what you do, when you issue your municipal tax-free bonds. You will have bondholders, there will be a lien on the property, and as it goes to condos, you'll have on each individual unit of the condo. If there is a default, then what will occur as part of the bond docs, and this actually did occur in some of the failures that Commissioner Herbst was talking about, is the bondholders required for the CDD to proceed forward with foreclosure. And the CDD foreclosed upon those properties. And then, in those instances that occurred, then a special purpose entity was formed.
So is this like, it would be like a non-recourse loan? I mean, who would it fall back against if the collateral is insufficient to cover the amount of the loan?
Just the CDD.
Right. So if it's an empty, so if just, if those assets are just the ones that are leaned, so that's the extent to which they would be able to recover?
Correct.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, you want to continue with the roll?
Commissioner Herbst?
Still yes.
Still yeah. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes. And that item's approved. My computer shut down. Okay, moving back to R4. This is a resolution declaring an intent to convey the city's interest in air rights above a portion of the property located at 801 Seabreeze Boulevard to the Bahia Mar Community Development District, and setting a public hearing for January 9, 2024, pursuant to the charter of the city of Fort Lauderdale. So Greg, this is essentially just to set a public hearing, or?
Correct. It's just the intent, and then there's a period that lapses, and then you all consider the approval of that later.
Okay, so the public is going to have a right to speak on this on January 9?
Correct, much later, yeah.
All right.
May I have a question? Will there be two hearings, two readings of that, or January 9 be the only one? Just one on January 9? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Yes. You knew I would.
Please go ahead.
I'm very chatty today. I have some problems with the air rights. I mean, I don't know, and there's some concern, especially in my, in my community, have some very big concerns about the air rights. Originally, the air rights were lumped in with the CDDs the first time, and I asked that they be separated, so we could separate them out. It seems like this is going to be, especially City, Tom, is this something that, Tom, is this something? I'm looking at the wording, concerns me with the wording, it implies that this is going through. But what I had asked for is a public forum, so the public could have input into this. And not that we are or are not approving it, because again, I don't, I'm not, in no way, in no way do I want this vote to imply whatsoever that I'm approving the air rights. I think this is just that we're going to be opening it up for discussion and public input. Is that correct?
I can give you assurance that you are not approving the air rights at all. You're setting this as a notice of intention to convey the air rights to the CD, which now exists. As you pointed out, you had a very good point, this should exist before we give them the declaration. So we took that to heart and changed the order of the agenda. But this just says on January 9, anybody who's here is going to get notice can come in here and talk about that, ask questions, make objections, that's the time to talk about that. But there's nothing that will happen tonight. It's only an intention to talk about it at a public hearing.
Okay. Now, the way it was worded, it looks like it's defaulting towards, it's an intent to go ahead with it, and the way it's worded, and I'm not an attorney, but the way the intent and all, it looks like we're going forward with the air rights and we're going to proceed. Unless we default, we change our mind, getting ready to put a resolution and everything's being lined up, and it's like, this is the first step and we're going ahead with this. And is that?
You are not doing anything other than saying, I want this to be, I know what the petitioner is seeking to do, so they can do that if and when they obtain approval of the commission, January 9, after a full-blown, if it exists that way, a public hearing. All questions to be asked. Nothing will be done on air rights, and still the value has not even been established yet. They're being looked at for value in the meantime. January 9 is the date.
Okay. I have another question. I don't know if they, did anybody do an appraisal of the value of the air rights?
There's an appraisal underway by outside counsel. I know the developer is not happy with the appraisal so far, so we're looking at different issues that he's raised. We're going to be meeting with the appraiser, I think, next week, to look at the issues, to try to get an idea on the contour of the value and how they were set up. I've spoken to him to some degree, he's looked very knowledgeable to me. He's just taking a cube of air, basically, right?
Correct.
Where a condo will be, presumably, and figuring out its value. And there's different ways of how you would value things. So that's going to be brought up to you January 9.
Now, the question is, could you guarantee that that appraisal will be finalized before January 9?
I believe it's going to have to be, yes.
Okay. Is there any value in delaying this vote today until the appraisal has come through?
I would say no.
No. Okay, just to, again, I've always said it before, to be crystal clear, there is nothing tonight that is implying whatsoever that we're in favor of the air rights. This is just like, like what I had requested two weeks ago, to open it up for public input. And this is simply a vote to open it up for public input to discuss it. It's not saying yes or no, just to open it up for public input. Is that correct?
It's not weighing on the air rights or whether you want to do them or not until January 9.
And it's not implying whatsoever that we?
It is not implied, and there's nothing that can come back that way to say.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify something that City Attorney said, because he said presumably over a condo, but I just need clarification on this, because it was my belief that the air rights would be on non-income-producing property on this site. So could I get some clarification on that? Because that's contrary to what the City Attorney just said.
Commissioner, you're correct. The small portion of air rights that are being considered for the CDD is only in and about the parking podium, and there's no income associated with that.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure, so.
So it does not include the towers?
It does not include the hotel.
It does not include any income that the city derives its income from pursuant to the master ground lease.
How high up does it go?
Well, air rights are air rights.
Oh, no, no, it's infinite. Okay, yeah.
It's in the air.
Commissioner, we maintain that air rights are talked about, when they convey the air rights, it's not just confined to the podium or the garage, but above.
Yes, that's correct.
I understand.
Air rights go all the way up.
Right. I understand, but I just wanted to clarify that one point in terms of the non-income-producing property versus that, because obviously, the CAM does talk about the limited portion of the parking garage, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? There being none, would someone like to introduce R4 resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice declaring its intent to convey City of Fort Lauderdale interest in air rights located above a portion of the real property located at 801 Seabreeze Boulevard to the Bahia Mar Community Development District for public purposes pursuant to Section 8.02 of the City Charter, subject to terms and conditions, providing notice of a public hearing before City Commission at 6:00 PM on January 9, 2024, or soon thereafter, as can be heard, for consideration of the terms and conditions and authorize, and to authorize execution of the conveyance instruments by the proper city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, once again, this is no way saying that we're in favor just to open it up for public discussion, simply for that.
You're absolutely right, sir. I give you that assurance.
Okay, if that's it, then I will vote yes for public discussion.
And Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes. And so R4 is now approved. I think that's the last item on the agenda. Is there any further business to the commission?
There is for me, Mr. Mayor. I have to ask for a closed-door session. Do I do that now?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And we had a resolution from this afternoon.
And there's a resolution, I'm going to have Mr. Sturman talk to you about. Let me get this out of the way, so I don't forget it. It's a request for an executive closed-door session of the City Commission at its regular meeting, and this is December 5, 2023, pursuant to Florida statutes, Section 286.0118A. I'm seeking advice on the following matter: Laura Clark versus the City of Fort Lauderdale Broward County Circuit, case number CACE 23009651, Jurisdiction of Court 12, during the City Commission's regular meeting on December 19, 2023, at approximately 4:30 PM, or as soon as thereafter, as it may be heard. Present at the Attorney-client session will be Mayor Dean Jake Trent Tullis, Vice Mayor Pamela Beasley Pittman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Warren Sturman, City Manager Greg Chavaria, City Attorney Thomas Hansbrough, Assistant City Attorney Robert M. Oldershaw, Outside Counsel Jeffrey R. Lawley, Esquire of Belling, Cochran, Lyles, Ed Al, Certified Court Reporter from Bailey Enton Court Reporting. The estimated length of the session will be only approximately 15 minutes. That's the request.
Okay. So that's on the record, so we'll have that closed-door hearing. So Commissioner Sturman, what is this about?
The resolution we discussed earlier today.
All right. So what is it that you're, you want to explain to us? This was just handed to me. What is this?
Yeah, and I just received it, too. We had discussed earlier, and I had mentioned this last time, we had that lengthy discussion about how to cross the New River with the, whether it be a tunnel or a bridge. And the county is looking for us to give them some finality on what our position is. And you could agree or disagree what I have here. I haven't even read it, actually. I'm reading this for the first time to see if this actually is in line. But I had mentioned before that while we strongly, strongly want to have a tunnel, and every one of us would really like to have a tunnel, at the end of the day, if, for whatever reason, a tunnel is absolutely unattainable, be it cost, be it structure, be it the county decides absolutely no, then at the end of the day, if a tunnel is not going to be built, then we will, as a group, support the county if a bridge is the only way to go. Now, I think this is worth discussing amongst us. It's a resolution as, to open the discussion up to see if this is what people want.
You know, and it's a meritorious resolution, there's no doubt about that. What do you, do you think we should maybe have the public weigh in on this before we start making decisions like this? I mean, these are monumental choices that you're recommending. Like, if we put it on the conference for next, for next meeting, I think the public should really be able to weigh in on this. I'd hate to, you know, I had the experience with the WAVE streetcar, and I think that the public needs to be more engaged in a decision like this, especially since we've engaged additional consultants now, or about to, that, you know, during the course of today's meeting, our consultants were texting me, telling me, you know, the numbers were so out of proportion to what they've discovered and or uncovered, that I just think that, you know, we're denying ourselves the opportunity to really have a full-throated discussion based on all the information. Even the White House group, after the meeting, admitted that their assignment tied their hands in many ways, because they were just told to look at the FDOT proposal and to see how accurate the FDOT estimates were. They never considered alternate tunnel plans, they never considered other options that, you know, might be equally appropriate and far less expensive. So, can we digest this between now and the next meeting, Commissioner?
Okay, well, my thinking is.
Let the public weigh in on this?
There's five of us here. And I always like public input, and I appreciate that sentiment, and I don't want to wait till March, February, March. I think this needs to be done sooner rather than later. But two weeks, I think that's reasonable, if my other colleagues are agreeing to put it off for another, till the next meeting. I mean, we as a body, you know.
We can do that. We have time on the conference meeting agenda, don't we, Greg?
Yes, we do.
Is that the consensus of all of us to put it off till next time?
I agree. Actually, I think precedent says that typically, at a conference meeting, we discuss the idea of something like this, and then we walk it on that night, typically. But this is a little bit different from that, because I've only looked at this very quickly because I just got it. So I, and I like to study something, I like to read something, I like to understand it fully. So I don't really have that opportunity here, nor do any of my constituents have that opportunity. But I think we're better off staying with the process that we typically do, where we have that discussion during conference, this is published, people see it, people talk about it, and then we walk it on that night and take action. That's, I prefer that as well. So if Commissioner Sturman is amenable to that, and I think that's a good idea.
I'm in agreement. I think we should wait for the two weeks.
Yeah.
And also allow our constituents to come in and voice as well for the open discussion with the community.
And Mr. Mayor, I agree with that, it's a very good point. Opening it up so the public could have more input. I agree with that.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for putting this forward. Any further business to the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. Sorry, this will be, this will be quick, this will be real quick. No, we're bringing a contract that you all requested at the next City Commission, the BDO contract. And so whether, whatever outcome you all decide.
We'll make that decision either.
Yeah, I think we should hold off on that until we figure out where we're going.
Right.
You know, if I could just comment on that for one second. So I know the initial $75,000 contract with BDO was done, I believe, under your authority, Greg. And that was not approved by the City Commission. Candidly, I would never have approved it. I don't think it makes sense to have another consultant come in and look at the work of all the other consultants that we've already hired. And so, so far, we've had FDOT's projections, and then we had Lochner basically validate the FDOT projections, and then we had Jacobs Engineering essentially validate the FDOT projections. validate the FDOT projection. So I asked these questions when we had the last conversation. I still don't know what we have BDO here for. What are we expecting from BDO that's going to be different from what we've gotten from everybody else? I really need to understand-
I'll tell you what.
Okay.
The purpose of that is FDOT, first of all, FDOT, when they first had this discussion, began with three bridge proposals. When I became interested in this, and this is before you all were elected, I sat in on the meetings and I said, why aren't you coming up with a cost estimate for the tunnel? And so they put together their cost estimate, which originally was 3.8 billion to 4.2 billion. Then we secured consultants voluntarily. These folks came to us. They were through Mr. Clennett, Russ Clennett, who introduced us to some tunnel contractors. And as a result of conversations that took place, FDOT said, hey, it's not 3.8 to 4.2 billion. It's actually 1.8 to 2.2 billion. So that immediately changed the conversation. But it was based on a scenario of a single tunnel design. And these- BDO is going to come forward with alternative tunnel designs, which will still accommodate the need of the commuter rail service, trying to anticipate the less of an impact on the City of Fort Lauderdale, and to come up with alternative designs for a tunnel that would be far less expensive and still be able to respond to the expectations of the stakeholders. So that's why BDO would be engaged, to come up with, instead of one tunnel design, multiple options.
I have some additional concerns about that, though, because when we did this contract, it was initially piggybacking on, what was it, Pompano? Or is it Palm Beach? Who are we piggybacking on with this? I'm sorry? Palm Bay. Palm Bay, okay. It seems to me that what we're doing now is not consistent with a piggyback, right? So if you're going to piggyback, we are required to piggyback on a contract that has the same scope and size and everything else. So I've never been quite clear how we're piggybacking on a contract that doesn't seem to have anything to do with what we're asking them to do.
Why don't we have them come and explain that?
That's kind of actually a procurement question and a legal question. It's not a BDO question.
No, but it's what is it that we've asked them to do, is the question?
I don't think the scope of services is comparable to what the piggyback contract is, and I'd kind of like our staff to weigh in on that.
So I believe that the procurement guidelines were waived. That's something you all resolved.
Right, but I think it was all done with the underst- I think we were waiving it because we were expanding rapid- we were greatly increasing the scope of the contract, right? But I still thought it was in keeping with the original piggyback contract, and maybe I misunderstood the intent of that when we did that.
I would like to take a look at that. I understand your feeling. If you do a piggyback, I'm going to do the exact same thing you're doing, except in my city.
Right.
You couldn't be possibly doing a tunnel in-
Same size, same scope, same everything, right, same everything.
So I don't quite follow where that went.
Okay.
But I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, I'd like a little more clarity on-
So we'll have that opportunity at the next meeting before we make a decision on the BDO.
Right, right, right. But, and even then, and then I also raised these questions talking with the city manager over the weekend, too, you know, having a reasonable expectation of when BDO's work is going to be done. So the first thing I asked, Mr. Mayor, is why BDO is only looking at the tunnel? Because if we're uncomfortable with FDOT's expectations of costs related to the tunnel, shouldn't they also be looking at the cost of a bridge? I mean, we're simply limiting-
Well, we could certainly ask them to do that, but in order to save costs for the city, we were just looking to narrow their perspectives. I mean-
Well, I'm just wondering, maybe the bridge, if the tunnel came from 4 billion down to 2 billion, maybe the bridge goes from 500 down to 200 and gets cheaper.
Or more.
Or more. Could go both ways.
Because we've been told that the bridge, you know, I've been told a lot of different things from a lot of different consultants over the last couple of years, and I've heard a lot of, a whole range of prices. I've heard that the bridge could cost, you know, what FDOT said, or it could cost more. I've heard that the tunnel could actually cost the same amount as a bridge. A lot of line items are not being included in the discussion today. For example, the cost of takings, you know, eminent domain and the amount of time that might be, that might cause a delay and all of that. So, you know, between you and me, there are a lot of variables out there.
Well, I got excited, Mayor, when you came back, because I know when we first started this, because I, like you, I have the benefit of having been around for a long time. So I remember when we first started talking about this, and the order of magnitude was substantial, and you had had some conversations with the Boring Company, who indicated they could do it for $30 million a mile.
Remember that?
Which, you know, that's the point at which I got really excited about the tunnel concept, because I thought, you know, instead of 3 billion, you know, if we're looking at three miles of tunnel at $30 million, you know, a mile, we're under $100 million. It was one-third the price of the bridge.
Well, that-
And that went by the wayside, unfortunately.
That proposal is still on the table for the vehicular, you know, east-west tunnel.
Right, but we start- you started the conversation with the Boring Company with respect to the train.
Right, I know.
And then it turned into Tesla Tunnel.
Well, you know, those-
I know. I want to get them back-
We're learning more every day.
Yeah, yeah. But, no, to my point, though, Mayor, you know, when we looked at alternatives to the typical cost of construction, and it fell down to within a reasonable range of what the cost of the bridge was going to be, that was a no-brainer, I think, for everybody. But now, I don't think that's a feasible solution. But to continue on my point with respect to the study, if the study is going to take six to nine months, and we need to be able to make a decision with the county in the next two to three months, I just don't see that we're going to have a report back.
I agree, but that's not the type of-
So I got an update from BDO today. They're targeting February for your all consideration.
Okay.
They're working aggressively on getting all that data because there's a lot of information, right? So when you're looking at putting a project from vision to fruition, you start with a ROM, you go back and do some analysis, and you bring back more data, and you start making assumptions and turning them into facts. I think something that was very pivotal in the last commission meeting was that you narrowed down the scope from something that was probably two and a half miles or three miles down to something that's less than a mile, less than half a mile. When you're looking at taking just a dip in, under the New River, something similar to the McKinney Tunnel, now you're looking at some, a short tunnel, which was a directive that you all provided and which is what BDO is doing. What they're doing is now narrowing down what that cost will be based on that directive that you all provided, and with the return that you all will see a more definitive estimate.
Wasn't that solution flatly rejected by the folks from, I think it was Jacobs Engineering?
You said, you said let a mile? A mile?
Right, a half a mile?
Less than a mile.
No, that's not going to fly. That's for light rail. That doesn't apply to us or cars. A mile, 1.7 is the minimum.
Right, light rail, not what we're talking about.
And that's what the experts are working on, and I'm relying on PEs and people that- you saw four tunnel experts that raised questions about the possibilities and about other things to consider. That's what we would like for you all to consider, too, next time when we bring this-
So how do we reconcile this once again? So again, right, I've got, I've got three groups of engineers over here. I got one group of engineers over here. Which ones am I going to go with?
Well, why don't we hear-
And how do we- I just want to understand how we reconcile that, though, Mayor.
Well, why don't we wait and see what the other group of engineers comes back with, and then we can try to reconcile, you know, where we can, on whose hat we can rely on. We can put our, we can rest our hat. I just think that we haven't, we haven't had a full-blown discussion about tunnel options, and I think you can agree with that, so-
Actually, I thought the White House group's presentation was pretty much a full-blown discussion of tunnel options.
No, it was only, it was only to substantiate the study that was done by FDOT. They admit-
But didn't their engineers look at what FDOT was proposing and say, that is the most viable solution? I mean, that was my takeaway from the report that I've read.
It wasn't the most viable solution. They just laid out the cost of the different options. They did not, after the meeting, I went up to them, and I said, could you have built a shorter tunnel? And they said, yes, but we weren't asked to consider that. They admit that. They said the scope of their, the scope of their assignment was only to discuss what FDOT had already studied and to corroborate what their estimates were. And I said, well, we did not put out an RFP as to what the best solution is. You just, you were not responding to that kind of RFP. You were just responding to a study that was done by FDOT, and that you were there to analyze their statistics and to get back to us and see how viable they were. And that's all you did, right? And they said, yes.
But didn't they also say that it had to be a certain depth? It had to be a certain length? I thought, I thought they made those statements on the record today at the meeting that this is the length that it has to be in order to have the appropriate- they flat out rejected the five-degree grade, which is what BDO is talking about. They said that will not work, so therefore that short length of tunnel is not feasible.
Well, it's the short, I think we should-
Because they said they have, I apologize, Mayor, but they said it has to be a 3% grade in order for it to work. I mean, he said that-
It's actually 1.5% gradient is the gradient for a, for the train. It has to be a-
I thought he said 3% today, but okay, I'll-
Yeah.
Two, maybe three. Two, maybe three.
Two, maybe three. But I've been, I've been under, actually, I've been laboring under the 1.5, which is even more restrictive. So, and they said-
Well, maybe that's where the three and a half mile tunnel comes from.
Well, they contemplated a 1.7-mile tunnel.
Right.
That was the first time I've heard that.
Right.
Okay, so-
And I think that's based on the 2% to 3% gradient.
Right. So, but our, but the BDO folks have indicated that we could do a shorter tunnel, still maintain the proper gradient, and still go at the depth necessary in order to accomplish the task. So, and that would reduce the cost to the tunnel significantly. Now, again, the folks today poo-pooed the idea of a single bore. BDO actually said that was the most, that was today the most desirable form of underground tunnel was a single bore, so-
So, but how do we reconcile that, Mayor? That's my question.
Well, let them come back and give us the determinant. Let them come back and justify their approach to it, and we have to make a decision. So, but I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to have this analysis done by a party that has, you know, BDO is, this is their business, right?
But it's also the other group's business, too. These are, these are the folks who, like he said, I built the Miami Tunnel. I mean, I'm the engineer of record at the Miami Tunnel.
You know, Nasri texted me when he said that, and he said he had nothing to do with that.
So this is my problem again. I've got, I've got, I've got people-
I'm just telling you, mister-
People disagreeing with each other.
I'm just telling you, he said he did not do what he said for the Miami Tunnel, so I don't know. But let's move on, and let's have this discussion next time in our next meeting, and we'll-
Okay, before you do the gavel, Mayor Herbst brought up an interesting thing that I was going to-
I'm sorry, wait. Timeout. Nope. Nope, 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 nope.
Wait, when did that happen?
Commissioner Herbst.
Here you go.
Commissioner-
No, thank you. No, thank you. Not interested.
Oh, my goodness.
Not now, not ever. Thank you.
Mayor Glassman, Mayor Pam Beasley. Greg, I can't wrap my head around something that's bugging me, and I'm waiting. There was the FDOT study, then FDOT number two, then Lochner, and then White House, things that we had, our body had directed you to go ahead with. When did we direct you to go ahead with the BDO study? I don't remember it ever coming-
The last meeting?
No, it was already, they present, we directed them to expand it, but they were already involved in the study. They were, we had already engaged them.
No, we didn't. They were, they had, they were just talking to us. We had never engaged them.
We didn't have a, we didn't pay them? We didn't have a letter? We didn't?
We had a purchase order that I was able to procure under my authority.
Right, that was the first time.
Okay, so you had a purchase order.
Right.
When did we instruct you or direct you to do a purchase order with BDO? I don't remember us talking about this.
You didn't.
So why did you do that on your own?
That was my proactive measure to continue the studying as resolved by the City Commission.
Why would you not put that forward to the five of us, whether to go? Why did you do that on your own? I'm curious.
Because of time, making sure that we got all information, that you all had all information for your decision-making process.
But you don't think it was wise to even make a phone call and let us know you're doing this? We find out after the fact that you've made a procurement? I mean, I don't understand why you would do that without-
Well, he did. He did make us aware of it after-
After the fact. Why did you, after he had already made the purchase order?
Well, that was because, he has the authority to do-
I know he has the authority to, but we're talking about the tunnel. We were very engaged here. Same thing with Mooney. And why are we, why are you doing, why are you usurping the five of us and doing these things without letting us know?
Excuse me, say that again? Why am I-
Why, why?
Why are you saying, what are you talking about?
No, I don't understand why you didn't let us know that you were going to engage BDO.
He did. He did.
After, after he had already made the purchase order. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I don't remember you coming to us and saying, I think we're going to engage BDO. Is that okay?
So I did give reports about opportunities for funding from the federal level. I did provide updates to you all about us submitting for federal grants that supported the system. And I was following the resolution that was adopted by the commission, which was to find all information possible to support the tunnel. And that was the local preferred alternative of the City Commission. So our goal was to provide as much information for you all to make that decision, whether it was that the tunnel would cost more or less. That was enough information for making, for you all to decide whether your local preferred alternative would be a tunnel or a bridge.
Yeah, I mean, he kept us informed all the time. Why are you saying these things?
No, because we had decided that we're going to go with the county, with the White House study, 250, 250, and that's the end of the story. And this is our final study.
Who said that?
We did. We-
You said that.
We authorized 250,000 for the White House study.
But who said that that, and we were just going to go with that? Whoever said that?
Well, that, we discussed this. We brought it forward. We said, let's do the White House study. This whole process, what we're going to do there. And the White House study, the Lochner, and all of a sudden with this one, it's boom, you're there, and it's the city manager. I mean, why did we not do the same thing that we did with White House with BDO? Why did we not bring it forward the same way we did with BDO, with White House? I have a problem with this, Dean. I know you're shrugging me off.
I'm not shrugging you off. And don't, why are you using all these pejoratives in your narration here?
I just don't know-
Usurping your authority, shrugging you off. Who's telling you to say these things? This is ridiculous. The-
Nobody's telling me to say this.
The city manager has been giving us real-time feedback on all the information he's gathered that we've asked him to gather, okay? This is, this is an ongoing process. And the fact that, you know, we authorized money for the White House group in conjunction with the MPO, it wasn't, it wasn't the single path we were taking. We have to get as much information as we can. He was responding to our request to get as much information as he can. And why are you bringing this up now? What does that have to do with what we're trying to do going forward?
Because we're relying on the BDO, and I don't remember us ever saying we're going to hire them. Now that you've already done-
We just authorized it at the last meeting.
Now, he's already done the purchase order. We're already into it. We decided to expedite it. But I don't remember us ever saying, let's do another study with the BDO, and let's see what they said before. There's a purchase order. We're already into it. But I think that we should-
We're not into it. We haven't signed a purchase order. It's coming up at the next meeting.
Well, that's not what you-
Allow me to clarify, please. So there was an initial purchase order that was opened just to understand more about some of the questions that were raised. Number one, you saw today that a tunnel was $3 billion, and also $3.3 billion over 50 years. We had a lot of questions about-
Billion, with a B, with a B.
Billions. So we had a lot of questions about that because we understand that that's a 60-to-1 ratio to what other reports for other tunnels of what they cost, like New York Tunnel. And so there was a, the Colorado professor, which is Dr. Mooney, he approached us and told us about some of the things he saw in that report, once it was published, that we ought to consider. We invested $5,000 to get clarity on that, which then sparked additional interest into other, into other reports. What I wouldn't want is to just, you know, have that lingering question about, you know, why that price is so escalated and not have any answers for you. So that's why we gathered more consultants to help understand that. And you will find in those reports that there are arguments that are raised that address that, and also that also provide a more realistic figure that you all can consider as well.
Okay.
I'll weigh on it. I would personally have preferred to have known that we were going to reach out to another consultant before you took it on, understanding full well that it's within your authority to do it. But I will agree, though, on something of this magnitude, where the commission is as deeply engaged as we are, I think it would have been prudent to come to us- I think it would have been prudent to come to us first and let us know that this was something we're going to do. Because candidly, for me, it creates more uncertainty, not less. Because now, I'm in a position where I have to, I have to, as a non-engineer, try to figure out which engineer I believe. So it's not making my job any easier, it's actually making my job more difficult. I have, again, three engineers on this side. Now, we're going to throw a fourth one into the mix that was already indicated to us that they disagree with everybody else. So you're not making my job easier, you're making my job harder. And I would not have been in favor of doing this. I think we have all the answers we need to move forward. I would not have gone out, and I've used this term before, no disrespect to the doctor at the end, but we're doctor shopping. We're trying to find somebody that's going to give us an answer to a question that we already want to go in a certain direction. And I don't think that's appropriate. So I would not have been in favor of doing that, not questioning your authority to do it. But I would preferred that you had approached us first on something of this magnitude. So I think that would have been a good idea.
Okay. You know, I think it's important that the city manager really take the initiative to try to help the commission. He did not know what the results were going to be of these folks that he engaged. They could have come back and corroborated everything FDOT said or not. It's, anything he can do to help our decision-making more complete and comprehensive, I think we owe it to ourselves to get as much information as possible. While it may be comfortable to go with just what one person says, I think it's more, I think we deny ourselves the opportunities to know the full range of opinions on, especially something so important as this, so, you know--
Well, now I almost feel obligated to hire another firm to contest what BDO has to say. When do we stop doing, right? When do we stop doing this?
Well, why don't we at least, you know, like, like any, if I go to a doctor and I'm about to have major surgery, I would certainly want to get a second opinion from--
But not fourth.
Okay, I'm a doctor, let me tell you how this goes. And this is my perspective, I'm a doctor. You know what this is like? And I see this occasionally. This is like somebody comes to me with cancer. And I say, "You need surgery. And I'm going to send you to an oncologist." And then they said, "Okay, you need surgery." And he goes, "I don't want surgery, I'll go to a surgeon." And the surgeon says, "You need surgery." And you see a medical, you go to three, four people. And eventually, you have the answer before you go to the doctor. And somebody, "I want to go with vitamins." And then you ended up going to a nutritionist and says, "Oh, you don't need surgery for the cancer, we'll do it with vitamins." You're going to get an answer, but it might not be the right-- but at a certain point, you keep, you go in there knowing what the answer is before you go in there, and this process is undermined at this particular point. I mean, at a certain point, you have to make a decision as a doctor.
Well, I'm an attorney, and I give an opinion. And sometimes the person who hears the opinion is not terribly comfortable with it. So I say, "Go to another attorney. Go to two other attorneys. And then if you're comfortable with them, you stick with them."
But we have four now, and we're going to keep going until--
Okay, well, I don't know about that. But I think we owe ourselves, and I think the community has the right to know all the information necessary. So let's move forward on this. I understand everyone's concern, and it's not that I'm trying to, you know, diminish it in any way, but let's complete the process that we've already decided to move forward on, and let's just come to a conclusion after that.
Okay, ending it on a happy note. I think that every one of us here does, if we can, everyone is committed in being a tunnel. I think every one of us is working together on the, no, we're not enemies. We're all working together on behalf of the community.
I understand that, I understand that.
And I don't want to make it look like--
And I was going to throw this at you, but I decided not to.
No, 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 but I think, and I want to thank everyone on the, I think every single one up here really has the community's best interest at heart. And, no, sometimes it's a hard decision. It looks like we're arguing, but in reality, every one of us is on the same page. And I want to thank everybody, including the city manager, every one of us. It's a long day, but thank you.
All right. Meeting concluded. Thank you.